I need to order. I don't know how supervisor.
President.
Supervisor Milton.
Present.
Supervisor Wilson.
Present.
Supervisor Williams. Attorney Scott Silver.
Present.
Chancellor Clark, President Lewis.
Present.
Deputy Clerk Paige Dean.
Present.
County Administrator Andy King.
Present.
And I'm present, Chancellor. And the sheriff.
Yes, President.
He's present. I need an implication. Can I get an implication from Mr. Brackford?
You got a thing. So, guys, generally, Father, we thank you, dear God, for allowing us to symbol once again. And, Father, we just carefully give your name all our praise and glory. And, Father, we just ask, oh, God, to continue to keep our elected officials safe, oh, God. Keep them in the families, oh, God. Father, continue to give them the wisdom of God. Father, we just pray for our folks in Spurman. We pray for our schoolteachers, our kids. Pray for our doctors, our nurses, oh, God, that were battling through COVID pandemic, oh, God. Father, we just ask, oh, God, that you continue to be in the midst, oh, God. And, Father, we just pray for family members that may have lost loved ones over this past month. Father, we just ask that you comfort them, oh, God. Father, we pray for our elected leaders locally in the city, in the state, and in this country, God. Father, continue to ground them closely together, oh, God. And, Father, we just continue to pray across this county as a whole to allow people to understand, oh, God, that it's you. And, Father, we just continue to pray for peace. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Can I get the sheriff?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I actually get two of the dockets. Can I get the red dockets? Can I get a motion?
No motion.
Can I motion my supervisor Gray?
Present.
Second, my supervisor Wilson, and a discussion.
Yes, Madam President, I'm voting against claim number thirty-six, thirty-seven, nine fifteen twenty-one. And there's another one on there. I've got some questions about it. But I'm voting against that one. The next one is, I don't see a claim, I think it was number on here. But it's, at the nine-month, eight-day, two thousand and twenty-one. I don't see a number on here. I don't show. It's got to be fifty-five.
I see there's a claim number. I see a claim number. I see that.
Yeah, that's the one, claim number.
Sixty-five. It says sixty-five. It's got to be a claim number.
Yeah, claim number sixty-five. These are for professional dues to drug court. I think the one that you have an issue with is somebody that's not a county employee that's getting another check. As a defender, I know why they're dues, or whether their dues can actually pay by town.
Um, Madam President, I'm voting against the first claim out of my seat. And I just want him to hold his second one till he gets some careful picture on whether it's legal or not.
Yeah, I agree with that, because I'm not sure either, so I'd like to hold on that one now.
All right, you all heard the motion. Without motion or without second. All the papers are. All the polls made. The House has had a motion carried and announced. Okay, next on the agenda is Mr. Anthony Howard with the Natchez Adams County Court. Is he here? Okay. Next, Mr. Jason Jones, kind of extension update.
Come on aboard.
Come on.
Are we not here today, the COVID, we talked about information on, I think, sort of about ceasefire, the internet. Get nine from copies of it. Okay. So, we're not here today, MSU extension had contacted all the offices in the South Bay District, including, oh, Adam, Clayborne, Highness, about upgrading an internet provider. Right now, we have AT&T, they give three hundred and fifty dollars per month. We have the phone line and the internet is one point five megabyte per second. Right now, they, their main goal is to upgrade all the county offices in the state. Internet speed right now also is very slow, no lock times. People want to show programs on our internet server for clients. It takes forever to log on online, also to download internet service. So, they are told to come to the board, supervisor office, and make a proposal that we switch to ceasefire. Ceasefire is offering, it'll be twenty dollar extra a month from three fifty to three seventy. And also, you have faster internet service than, you see, the megabyte, two hundred and fifty megabytes per second. So, you have more megabytes. And also, they'll provide the internet phone service you through the high-speed internet, but it'd be more features and a faster internet service with this ceasefire provider. MSU has said that the state contract of AT&T ends in February twenty-twenty-two. So, AT&T might go up even higher price than the three seventy that ceasefire offered right now. But basically, a lot of county offices in the state have already switched over from AT&T. The ceasefire, Jefferson County supervisor told me that they switched over from AT&T to ceasefire last year, and they haven't had any issues with their internet service. They're in this first service way faster, and they, the spending office, they haven't had any issue with it. But the day management, as I get information, got a re-over, got to consider, but the contract of the state provider AT&T due end in February, and they told us that it'll take several months for ceasefire, for ceasefire to install the new internet lines or equipment. But they want to see the board, supervisor, consider it, and if they get approved in the next month or two, they will, MSU will work hand-in-hand on getting the ceasefire to go ahead and start working on the ceasefire, getting equipment installed. So, it does have a cost y'all can think about, but they were saying that long-term, at February, AT&T most likely going to go up on their service and their contract end. But they don't know how much it is. But what they were telling me, if they go up, they still going to offer the same service. Not going to be an upgrade, high-speed service, the same service offering now. But be it the higher cost, if y'all go with ceasefire, y'all will get a faster internet service and a better phone line service. A lot of times, often in my office, sometimes we get a stack in the phone line real bad. The phone line copy going out, we have a call to get somebody to come check on it. So, it does overall just making the service and the internet phone line better for keeping the office and also the work of clientele.
Okay. You all heard the request?
Any costs to the county for upgrades? Or they're just going to put the service in, and it's going to be that much a month?
Yeah, it's going to be twenty, twenty dollar extra a month. But detail-wise, my IT department on campus sent it to us, so y'all, I can leave the information with the court. They got a more detailed information, but it's just information I've been given. They even all the kind of coordinators in the state to make a proposal to the board supervisors.
Supervisor Gray.
I'm going through these bills, and I see we got a lot of stuff on here with AT&T. My only question is, with the sheriff and our IT guy, needs really looking into and investigating to make sure we getting the best certified.
Yes, sir.
You mean for the sheriff?
Uh, he talking about internet.
Oh, internet, okay.
And also, I would just like to recommend, one point five megabits per second is really slow, but I guess a huge jump from one point five to two hundred and fifty. There may be a milligram you can possibly find here. But, yeah, one point five megabits per second is hardly nothing, but I would say around the range of fifty. But two hundred fifty seems a bit over too, but it depends on how many units and stuff.
Twenty dollars, how long? That's how they ask, about twenty dollars. They asked, yeah, they only asked for twenty dollars.
Yeah. Madam President, Supervisor Wilson asked a very important question. They got to come and put some more equipment in to do this. It is going to cost the county anything, or they going, I ain't even going to pay for it.
That I can check into, because that's all they sent me. I can check into it and get back with y'all on that detail.
But you need to know all of it.
Okay.
The cost is taken, cost is going to stall and everything.
All right. Sheriff, is that what you got down there, the ceasefire down at the?
Yeah, they, they shoot it on dishes down there, though. It's not hard where I like it is to, to the center that they work out of down there. We wish we can get that private from, from their center to our. Not, not that far. It's not, but it's, it's expensive. It's expensive to, to be and do it, so that's why we don't have, that's why we couldn't be helping.
Okay.
Mr. Jones, can you get that information? Just to get it as soon as possible, you could just give it to the county administrator.
I'll come with.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
All right.
All right, Mr. Joey Fur. We're going to go to this, and Sheriff, come on with you.
Good morning. I'm Joey Fur. I'm a landscape architect from Baton Rouge. Some of the faces around here are familiar. We, we started a project kind of with the, just Indiana County, a couple of years ago, back in two thousand and nineteen, where we did a master plan of your, of your recreational facilities, just to kind of look at, at what we might need to do to, first of all, just upgrade the facilities for the community, and second of all, how we could, how we could potentially compete a little bit in the sports tourism market, be able to bring some, bring some tournaments and other things to the facility. We were contacted to come back and kind of look at, just looking at the softball fields and Chester Willis, you know, for the county specifically, and just want to quickly kind of go through where we were on the project and make, you know, propose to you how we can proceed to go ahead and get these fields upgraded. First of all, in, in order to, to compete in the sports tourism market, you know, you really have to have facilities that, that will bring tournaments in. There are certain amenities you have to have. And when we were assessing the facilities, a lot of the facilities, the fields are not the right size. The, the spectator areas are substandard. There are some safety issues and so forth. But some of the ideas of what we do are larger sports parks. We also do a lot of college and, and high school standalone facilities and upgrading both the agronomics and the playability of the fields, but also the landscape architecture portions of the projects, which are, you know, where the spectator is going to be. What you really want is when people come to your town for a tournament, they, you know, you want to have nice facilities for them to go, and then they, then they can spend their dollars in your town, at your restaurants, and your hotels. And that's where the real economic impact comes from. These are some of the projects we worked on, you know, in Mississippi, and we've done them across Louisiana as well, even done a little work in Florida. And where we got in, in the project was at what we were calling our preliminary master plan. So, we looked at all of the baseball fields, and, and we, and, you know, looking at the softball complex, you can see from these pictures that it's just not, these fields are too small, most of them. The spectator areas are, you know, just over the years have been added on to, and there's some, there's some some spaces that are constricted, and I think we can make, you know, at the softball thing, I think we can make some, some pretty good improvements, both to the fields as well as to the, the common spaces. What we had done is we had looked at these, these fields just in, in order of a magnitude of what we needed to do to get them to standard. And then we, we were at the point where we were about to go into further detail of design when the project kind of got put on hold. And what we felt like at the, at the softball complex was really that we needed to right-size the fields. You have two, you have three different sized fields, and what we kind of proposed were, were, were to come in and to, to make some improvements, both in the spectator areas, things like taking the, taking the existing bleachers, upgrading them so that they are, they are to a standard that's both ADA accessible as well as safe. You have open rise bleachers there. But to use some of the, the structures that you've already got to add on to, both, both to upgrade and maybe put some shade on, try to work with the paving in the middle to, to make circulation better, make this whole project safer. Upgrade bullpens, upgrade fields. The agronomics, I think, is very important. You, you need to have playable fields, safe fields, the right-sized fields to have the tournaments come in. But you also have to have good drainage and those types of things. So, we made some recommendations there, and I'm not going to go into all the detailed recommendations. But we have gotten to the point where we, we're, we're talking about what we can do to right-size the fields, what we can do to make those agronomic and spectator improvements, and we've come up with some cost estimates for it. Likewise, at Chester Willis, you know, you've got a kind of a cool old ballpark here that's, that I think has a lot of potential as a, as a draw, particularly as I understand there's a couple of, a couple of, maybe three high schools that play here. So, you can see it's a substandard facility, in my opinion. If, if we want to bring showcase tournaments here, we would need to upgrade. Also, there, there was talk about bringing minor league or, or, or junior college teams maybe into, you know, for a game here and there, if we could upgrade the facility. You've got the bones of a, of a good facility, but you, you know, there's some things, again, that we needed to do. Again, in the field, there's extra space where it doesn't need to be inside the lines or inside the fences. So, we would want to right-size those spaces. We would want to make the, the fields drain. We would want to make the dugouts, you know, be in a configuration where if a ball is thrown in behind them, that you actually could pick that ball up and throw to home plate without having to step out from behind the dugout, which is one of the things that we noticed. There's also upgrades that, that could be done in the common spaces here, or we feel like should be done in the common spaces here. And of course, on all the fields, lighting upgrades would be, would be good, but particularly on this field, because the, the speed of the game at the, you know, high school or junior college level is much higher. So, from a safety standpoint, you need to have higher foot candles than you currently have. And, and so, we, you know, we are, you know, looking at, how do we make this a premier facility? What we did, and we projected, and this is not the entire estimate, but we projected cost for, for the two different projects, and we kind of gave you a, you know, a minimum requirement just to do some upgrades, a silver requirement, which would, which would give you some amenities and do it a little bit better. And then the gold, I think, would, you know, really kind of make it a premier quality event. So, if you look at all of those, the, these are the totals for both the softball and the, and the Chester Willis field. So, they range from, you know, six and a half hundred thousand up to one point nine million for those upgrades. And then we also have an allowance there for, you know, surveying, testing, fees, and so forth that would go into this, you know, a ten percent. So, your, your total project cost for these projects, you know, ranks from seven hundred and thirteen to two point, two point one, almost two point million. Now, we are in the point where we have not done really detailed design, because we were in the point of the master planning process where we were trying to figure out how we, you know, how we move forward and waiting on some feedback. So, we need to get a survey of these sites before we can really start working in detailed design, you know, to a detailed level where we can do better, better cost estimates and, and really figure out exactly the dollars that we need to spend at each individual ballpark. But that's really up to you guys, you know. If you, if we want to proceed, we just need to make some decisions quickly so that we can move forward. I, I understand you, you want to move forward as quickly as possible. The process takes a little time. We would need a couple of months to, once we get a survey of both sites, we need a couple of months to kind of bring it through what we call design development, then we come back to you and make sure that what we're doing is in concert, both budget-wise and scope-wise with the board. And then after that, we would go ahead and move toward construction documents that we could actually put out the bid and, and, you know, solicit prices for the construction. The last thing that we would probably do on both of these is we, we might look at doing a, what we call a field package separate, of, of construction documents separate from a, a construction package, which would be more of the interior spectator area type things. Reason being, there are special companies that specialize in doing work agronomically, you know, that are sports field contractors. And if we put those guys under a large general contractor sub, we just up buildings, then you'll pay a markup for that, and you may not get the best, you may not get the best company. You may get somebody that's not as, as familiar with doing the type of sports turf improvements that we, we want to do. So, once we get into the project, we can make those decisions collectively with you guys. And I guess what we're really offering is to kind of help you go through the process of, of trying to see if we can, if we can get these things upgraded. I think it'll be great for the community. I think it'll create some economic development potential. And, and there's, you know, there, there's certainly no time like the present to get started, so.
Okay. You don't want to have any questions?
Did you give us, you gave us the two point one for the gold package and the seven hundred and thirteen for the silver package?
Uh, no, the silver package is one point, one, almost one point two, one point one seven nine. And I'm going to leave this presentation with you, and, and Wes has got the, the full estimate that we have. Now, the estimate we have now is, been somewhat updated since two thousand and nineteen. We probably need to go back and make sure that we've got those numbers, you know, tidied up a little bit, because prices, COVID prices have, have increased, and particularly in steel and wood and things that, you know, require shipping. So, but, but I think these are ballpark numbers to kind of start. One of the things I was suggesting is if, if we can kind of determine how much we want to spend on both facilities, then we can kind of together right-size the project to spend the money as best, as best possible. But I think you need to spend a certain amount of money to really get into that, that sports tourism market on a, on a higher level. You know, there, there's a certain amount of upgrades that you just really have to do, or you're not going to be able to, to get very many tournaments to come here. But I think if you do do those, with the other assets that the town has in terms of restaurants and tourism, you know, type of, you know, history and things like that, it makes for a good place for, you know, people to want to come. And, and the, the traveling teams do tend to like to move around a little bit. They don't like to go to the same place every time. And so, I think that's a very great place to bring them.
I agree.
Do you mention something about surveying?
Mm-hmm.
What, what's the cost for surveying the sites?
Uh, I don't, we don't do that particularly, so we would get somebody locally to do that. But I would, my, my guess that it would, you know, each site would, would probably be in the, you know, eight thousand range. We have to get pretty specific grading information, because we're talking about working on one percent, two percent slopes in the fields. So, we need to know where the drainage is and all that, so it, it is somewhat time-consuming. But I did include in that two point one seven five, I've got a ten percent in there that that allows for our fees as well as some surveying and some testing of, of concrete, which is just, just kind of a general, you know, number. Once we, once we decide, we can, we can formalize our fees with, you know, state scale, state engineering scale, or your county engineering scale, however you want to do it. And then we would, we prefer to get the survey from someone, you know, locally that, that they can give us in a format that we can work with. We're just, when the master plan level, we don't, we don't work to the inch. We work to the foot, you know, is what I'm saying. But when we, we're going to build it, we got to work to the inch.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. This is something we'll be looking into, because we are thinking about doing a bond for recreation. So, we definitely look into this.
Well, if you need anything else from us in terms of, you know, a more formal proposal or anything, we'll be happy to, we'll be happy to, you know, come back up and talk with you or, you know, work with the, the board to, to make sure we do the, what's, what's most needed for you guys. So, I, I think our experience, we've got kind of a good regional experience in, in this, and we probably got, we probably built more fields than, than most engineering or landscape architecture firms, you know, in the southeast or medium, and so we feel like we're very well positioned to help you guys out.
Can I have a little bit, I was on the commission when he actually came in and did it in two thousand and nineteen, and we had reached out to all corner, and we had reached out to Coleen, and all corners, they would come back and upgrade the field and add lockers and showers and do the field, and they would come in and play some games. We also reached out to, I said, Coleen, and they said we would probably do the same, but they was waiting for the fields. And also, the guy, whatever, it all got shut down. At that time, John Ward was kind of like hidden up, so you can kind of reach out to him.
Yeah, I did. I, I talked to John Ward probably six months ago. He's the one who sent me the, the original copies of, of all of this breakdown. And then we reached out to Joey about two, three weeks ago to try to get this all back rolling again. Due to the breakup in the ILA toward the city and the county, we got that money budgeted. And I think as, as a board, as a whole, I might, I might speak for everybody, I'm going to speak for myself, and say that it's time for us to upgrade these parks, and the kids deserve it, and our community deserves it. So, hopefully, we can get this thing headed in the right direction.
Okay.
Madam President, I don't know if this, we upside is up to say, but when I go on Liberty Park, I see that the Adams County, when I go to the softball fields, I don't know if this average, but they say the board of trustees of Adams County School District. So, we need to make sure that we going to upgrade some ball fields over there. We kind of get them in the loop, and maybe they want to put in and help us out.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Thank you. We kind of listened to that, too. During school season, it belongs to the school, and they told us during the all season, it belongs to the county, so I guess you can't look into it. But we serviced it. We serviced it when school shut down. The school going on, they serviced it, so.
Okay, they just serviced it. We trying to see who owns it.
No, I'm talking about, yeah, the service. We ain't going to do the maintenance of the grass cutting and fix the water line.
That's the service side part.
That is a good point, though. You know, the, the high schools should play there, and, you know, both in the softball and, and the baseball field. So, you know, there, there is, it is going to be a, you know, an asset to the school system, you know, as well to, to the recreation, you know, of Adams County.
I agree more than.
Before they can even get us some claims that are bid ready or estimated cost, they'll have to do a survey. So, that would, what do you do to cheap, middle road, or most expensive, or whatever, you still going to have to have a survey done? So, if you wanted to get IMS?
To look into that.
Go ahead and get us a quote on that. That's something y'all can do, right?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
We need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to get IMS, begin the process of looking into a survey for Chester Willis Field and the softball complex.
I got a motion from Supervisor Milton. Can I get a second?
Sure.
Got a second from Supervisor Gray and a discussion.
So, you're looking at sixty days from when the survey's done before, in the least, before they can have, you know, cost.
Yeah, I think we need to crystallize our ideas a little bit based on the survey, and then probably come back to you with another kind of menu of, you know, these are the items that we, you know, we think we can do for these dollars, and then we can decide, okay, we can do this at this point. And really, I think we need to make that right decision. Then we'll forward that into the, the document that you can actually, you know, advertise and solicit public.
He should be getting us proposal after the survey, if we just decide to move forward, obviously. There should be a 3D image of everything, and, and then with proposals is what to do. So, that way, I mean, we don't, none of us are, that's all we have, some like architect design things, because we don't have to. But a proposal, then y'all can kind of value engineer it if you need to, or whatever. But that survey is, you can't go anywhere without it, so.
All the papers are.
Uh-huh.
All the polls made. The House has had a motion carried and announced. You have anything else?
Yep, unless you have any other questions for me, I'm, I'm good to go.
Thank you. We appreciate your comment. This is Jimmy Waiter. And that's the, the recreation and food.
Good evening, good morning, good morning, board. I have, I guess I ought to bring the budget. We didn't change. We was actually going to meet, we had met last month before y'all met. It's not a whole copy for everybody, but this is what Peyton Kev from, from the Silas and Simmons left us with, and we can kind of go.
left us with and we can kind of go with it, Richard, but as I understand it was, but let me take this board back. When we first started this with pool and all of this, this board was paying the county, was paying Y and Z a hundred thousand dollars just to use their money. He was paying a director $52,000 plus salary. This was not, the city wasn't putting in none of this. This all came from this board right here. Once we got in and the Y went away, that saved this board a hundred thousand dollars. We cut the director's salary, the basement had, so we wound up paying about $30,000 instead of $52,000. Then we had hired a person in office, and I understand you're really good at that person in office, but I want to remind you, December the 5th, 2019, a girl scaled the pool, scaled the fence, jumped in the pool, happened, I was there and I went in and saved her. If you're not going to have somebody in the office, you're going to have to have security guards. I had one over there a million mornings that homeless people had been in there. I had one of them a minute in the mornings that the lady called me, you got cats and dogs at the end of the fence. If you're not going to keep the pool, you got a million and a half dollar bill that you sit there. The pool is worth 1.2 million and the building itself worth half million. And you're going to leave it unguarded for four to six months out of the year? I am here to ask you why. I mean, you had to meet us, you didn't invite us to the table so we could have brought all this out, you just made a decision without, and I got a call on the last minute about it. And that's why I came to go over with it and I know, you know, you got homeless people there, you got people in the building, you got an outdoor pool that we come in, that the lady come in, she cleans and get bugs out of it for the first two hours. You know, you also got laps swimming, which starts at 6:00 in the morning and go to 8:00. So, they kind of break their schedule and then I would come in, all this is volunteered, I would come in and would help them out. And we had adult swim that didn't want to swim with the kids, so adult swim started from 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening. I came in and helped Faye out on there because they came, one of them would come in and do the laps, and the other would do the regular swimming during the day, and then I would come in and help them out. All this you were getting without being paid for. You know, so, when you're talking about cutting somebody out and leaving the building undone, I think y'all need to rethink that. And when you're doing away with ILA, you're cutting out a lot of stuff that you're getting. You also had, we got a guy that helps put the chemical in the pool, which I helped Faye do and I do it. Blanket sign at the time, we wanted to do it, get them to do it, they wanted $2200 a month. You're basically getting that for free, so you're going to have to hire somebody to do that. So, when you sit down and went through all of these deals the other week with the city, you didn't consider none of all the outside stuff that you're getting done, that was not paid for, that you're going to now have to go back and pay for. So, that's why I'm here to ask this board or answer the question to this board that was not asked last week.
Mr. Waier, let me say this right quick first. We have not made any decisions on the ILA at all yet. It was just a discussion. So, that's why we're here today and thank, and thank for you came today because we needed some answers. We have asked that, someone come to a meeting at least once a month and give us some answers so we would know what's going on, so.
I'm not going to make an excuse, it was hard for me to do. Now, on this board that you have, you have a doctor, Dr. Kennedy Drain, you have, you have bank vice president on the board, you have a couple of business people on the board, you got a couple of school executives on board, one plus. If I can't make, the rest of them can't seem to make it now, we can have Faye come do it, but she's not aboard now, she is, she's, was the director, is the director. You know, I have a lot going on, I have a small business, I'm building a house, I'm president of business in the city, so I'm kind of stretched out.
Yeah.
So, I pick time when I can.
She is the director and she can't call and give, you know, information, you know, to the board.
But the reason I said it was, you gave us, you made this board to keep it non-political, shall I say? And so, when you got all these people on the board that is capable people, only thing we wanted to bring to y'all is when we had something that was out of ordinary. The regular stuff come on, we try to keep it in-house and take it by ourselves. And that's why you put that board there. So, long as things was going, and put it like this, when the first year started, matter of fact, adult swim night, I didn't even throw that in, adult swim night has been going on ever since we've been there, and that's a Thursday night. I volunteer from 7:00 to 10:00 every Thursday night during the summer to do adult swim night. That cost this board or the city not a penny. Only thing it took with our bill, I guess it's because you got a war and that going on, but, you know, we volunteered to do that. And as a help, this year we had about 20 adults swim. We had one lady that was 64 years old that went through swimming lessons. We had averages like 140 people a day during the summertime. You know, so the pool is steadily progressing and we're steadily doing it. You're not hearing no static, so long as you not hearing the static, we doing our job.
Let me say this, Mr. Waier, when, in the meeting, I was the one who first said everybody should be at the table. So, before, you know, and I understand what you're saying and so I, I think you got some wrong information from the way you coming with the board. We made a decision, we, what we did is said we had questions. That's why I was the one asking, well, the questions, we had questions couldn't be answered. So, I said, well, we should have a meeting with the city, the county, the pool director, everybody should be sitting at the table. So, the city, other county did not make any decision to do anything. It was the questions being asked, the questions that you asked, some of the questions that you asked for me, I'll put it like this, the doodles and stuff like that, that's, that came up in that with some of the stuff, so, well, what's going to be done, what's being done, but you wasn't at the table. And that was from my understanding that we should have, that we was going to get back together and figure out, put everybody at the table before we make any decision. So, you know, and I understand the way you was talking, like, we made a decision, we should reconsider. You got wrong information because ain't nobody considered, ain't nobody made any decision. It's, we wanted you and hopefully from this point, that you, you answered my question. Hopefully from this point, we can get back with the city and all of us that are at the table come up with a solution. I just want to say that to you because I think somewhere down the line, if something happened, it's leaving.
I'm very apologize, but I mean, I already made this decision.
No, there was no decisions, Mike. Supervisor Gray.
Madam President, I just want to say this, I've been on board from day one with this swimming pool and I think the swimming pool is an asset to the community, which a lot of people didn't want it to be. But I must say this, we did have problems with the agreement we had in place and what people got to understand, when you have elections and new people come on, some of these agreements don't just pass over to the new elected officials. And the city, when I was the president, the city never let me and told me that they did not want the recommission no more. They wanted to do away with the recommission. He was at the table, I was turning, and they wanted to do their own recreation. They wanted to do all their city parks themselves. I brought this back to this board and when I brought it back to this board, we didn't have a problem if they wanted to do everything themselves. So, what happened was, they came up with a new ILA saying that the recommission would only deal with the pool and the soccer field. That's all the city say that they was going to pay for, was the pool and the soccer field. That's how we get to the point where we're at today. And when I was the president, the mayor asked me because the city had hired the director as their recreation director. And he asked me, will we continue to go half of on the salary? And I told him, I don't think the board have a problem with that, which this board did not have a problem with paying half of a salary when she was the recreation director for the city of that, because we still pay our half even though we shouldn't, we didn't even have a problem with that. So, once they went in a different direction with the director, that's when the salary got to change. To my knowledge, that's when the salary had to change. And for these other personnel, the only way this is going to work is the city of that, which pay half of everything with the pool, going to have to agree to it. But here go the catch. For some reason, this was a city bait. We burst it over in the city. Now, all of a sudden, all the responsibilities transferred to the county when I came over here. But the county really didn't have nothing to do with this, but for the pay half and with the soccer field. Now, all of a sudden, they want to give us the pool and say that y'all handling the pool and we handling all the other recreation. The pool always been inside the city, then as far as I'm concerned, and that's where it need to be. So, if anybody need to have a pool, it need to be the city because they got personnel and everything else. The county ain't in the pool there.
Well, the pool was actually, the director was hired through the commission. The city was not paying none of the salary at first. This board here was paying the whole salary. Once I became chair and we got away with the Y, I'm the one that went, Scott was on the board at the time and they all basically moved on.
We were.
Well, we was on the board. And what happened was, to get the city involved, because the city was paying nothing, they weren't even paying the bills on time. I came to this office and in this office, Davinell and, and.
Myself.
Myself is the one who actually hired.
Angela.
Blanket sign, you know, Silas and Simmons, because at the time, we had hangers and hangers doing our books. And they made the decision that they would pay that. And what we did was, we made the city step up and pay half the salary. They was not paying anything. All they was doing was using the name. And you can take, right now, I've been there every day, from the time these ones that you said, now I've been elected, now one has come to their pool since I've been there. So, nobody from neither board, well, some of you have come to that, and Angela has come in, has come out to see exactly what's going on. Nobody from the city that's making the decision, and I tell you that, and I'm not trying, have come over there. But to actually get to Faye's salary, she's hired to the commission and the other girls hired to the commission. And what we did was, Silas and Simmons would send you half the bill and send them half the bill, and that's how everything get paid. So, the city never really, the city just start paying in the last year or two. Because we had to come to this board to actually push them and start to get them to pay. And that's when Davinell stepped in and said, we're paying, we hired Silas and Simmons.
I remember, Madam President, I agree with that, but the part I don't agree with is when they hired her as the city recreation director. Then the city start putting in half of the money, which they should have put in more than that, but they, well, well, this is what I'm saying.
She was never hired over.
So, this is what I'm saying. To my knowledge, they was, YMCA supposed to been running all recreation in the city and the county, is that not correct?
That was all that.
Okay, that's what we were paying them to do, to operate all the recreation in the city and the county. And once they left and it didn't work out, then we hired Faye. Okay, the city hired her as their recreation director or something.
They just, they just took over, she's been coming to them. Her direction from us was to come to y'all board meeting the first Monday of each month and come to the city, their first Tuesday, well, second Tuesday of each month and give updates. The city, Davinell kind of took her and pushed her, they, but the salary from Faye and her direction always came through the board. Now, she would come back.
Until evening.
Huh?
I'm not agreeing with that.
Okay, but so, but only on what you were saying about the Y, when she, they spoken over everything. But the city wouldn't put their employees in. The city would not put their soccer bunny, the city would not put tennis bunny in. So, only thing we was over then with the city was the little baseball fields out there. And that's when we got this guy that just left to come in to try, to try to do an update on the fields to get them up where we get the tournaments in. And that's when the new people came in and they did away with the whole thing. We put everything on hold, so we had a, we had a basic plan, we had a middle plan, and we had a master plan for all the fields.
Madam President, that's just what I just said. When the new elected board came on, they wanted to go in a different direction. And the direction was, they felt that they didn't need the commission no more. They wanted to do, well, they was over here, they told y'all, they wanted to do their field themselves and we do our field. Is that not what we said? That sound like what I heard.
It's saying what you're saying, but what you, I kept telling you that Faye, along the point I was trying to make, is Faye has always been paid through the commission. I'm not inviting that though.
She wasn't hired, I don't know about the question.
I ain't going to.
And, uh, Ms. Waier, Ms. Gray, and the rest of my board, I'm going to make my same recommendation that I made at the last time we met. We have a lot of questions. We do have another party that need to ask a question that's not at the table. The county and the city have an IL, trying to get an ILA with you, with the pool, with everybody in. We need to all sit down together because if you go to the city, you going to discuss and say what the county did. If you come over here, everybody going to say what we did. We need to get together and make a decision and move forward for the benefit of Adams County. And that's what I say, if everybody at the table, we only can change ideas and I see how misinformation can get out when everybody at the table. I see how somebody can feel like they blaming, they blaming. If we all sit down at the table and communicate, and then we can sit down and make the best decision for the citizens of Adams County. That's just what I feel and I, I mean, I don't know what anybody else say.
You need to have it before October 1st.
And we need, we need to make a call and get it happening. We need to do it before October 1st, whatever day, that's pretty much everybody here. But going back and forth, if you go to the city, you probably going to get something different. You come over here, you going to get something different. You come over here, but until we sit at the table, before October 1st, we need to sit at the table, iron this out so we can move forward, because it really not that different.
Well, I think y'all cover the budget that Silas and Simmons put up. You can kind of arrange it, because I know y'all want to change the staff, even if you don't do it. Look it over and you can look at the numbers and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to get them to you, but I cannot get Peyton, Peyton, Peyton to come and give a answer to that.
Was this based on the commission dealing with the entire city and county or was this based on just the pool?
It's based on basically what we was over on that, the whole soccer fields. And, but it didn't have a city. You kind of look through, we got intercourse and Peyton can actually answer. Right now, we got about 30, if you go through the numbers, we got about $36,000 sitting in the county, like $35,000. Because we, we do a few things and sometime, you know, $10,000, $10,600 is still sitting there, which is a lot of gate to some basketball courts that the city had put money in for Dominique Wilton Basketball Court, so that's, we know that's dead, but the money is still sitting in the county.
And here, I have a question, because I'm looking at the 20-year budget and the 21, or do you all have a 22-year budget to cover?
Uh, I think if you go onto the back sheet back there, I think he has something, I looked to the back. She said something about 2022? Yeah, he got it up, so, but I'll get Peyton next. You got the question, give me, I'll give you a call, you can give me a call when I can take you.
Basically, Westside total bought like $185,000. How much difference? 30,000, 40,000 less?
Now, can we have, I'll have it, yeah.
I just want to say something like y'all was just saying, the buzz is funny for me. If this board come on board and get the notice, we can put a note everywhere. And notice will, will help us out. We got eyes where we don't need all that other stuff, we got eyes where if something happen, notice only just like that. And that's our plan to try to put these cameras in places where we having problems or thinking we having problem, and they'll alleviate our problem. That's our plan.
I do want to remind you, there's a high school that has kids around their pool all day long. Notice will let us know. But knowing and stopping is two different things.
My understanding.
Matter of fact, I'm going to tell you even how rowdy they get. I was over there one day and some kids come in and the sheriff had to step in and kind of man-having and get them in line. So, there's always something going on that somebody have to be, to kind of like be in charge. And he was there to help me out that day.
My understanding is, the city has voided the agreement.
It voided everything.
So, and they can do that, just like we could have done it, they could have done it, they can happen. They're asking, their budget proposed is 185,008. That will require one half of those expenses to be, what, $93,000, $92,910. In the very least, that means both parties have to put that in. That's as they presented for approval. At the end of this month, the city said they're not. At the end of this month, the city said they're not paying anymore. So we, we're supposed to get budgets approved before the end of the month.
Right, but I think we all supposed to submit a new budget, a new budget that's supposed to come in about what Mary said.
He said that they would submit the budget and we could approve whatever we, whatever.
Whatever we want, that's what I'm saying, they could submit whatever they want.
See, all we're saying, what they was gonna do.
Well, well, I think they said he was gonna come to the table and, yeah, talk about what they was gonna do.
They told us how much they were gonna put in, what they were gonna pay for, we needed to decide what the salary was gonna be, and they, they said that right there and said that.
That's right.
That's what they said, what they was gonna do.
And so, they're not paying anything at the end of the month.
Can we set a meeting up?
I told him set a meeting up.
Before the end of the month.
I think we need to set a meeting up before the end of this week out. One time, one time, dealing with this, set, set a meeting up before the end of this week out.
I won't be here. I won't be here.
You won't be here?
And it's clear that some of y'all, you, you won't be here either, me, I said like the thirtieth.
But I, you can be over the phone, man.
Uh, I'll probably be in a meeting.
Well, listen, ma'am president, we might as well do without you, because, uh, we gonna have to get this resolved before October first.
If you set it up on September the thirtieth.
In the meantime, if they don't meet with us.
Who?
If the city won't meet with us.
They gonna meet, if the city, then that's a problem meeting.
Okay, well, we've been asking for meetings for how long? I mean, my suggestion is we go ahead, we need to set up a meeting, try to set a meeting, but if they won't meet, if you approve the budget, the city will prove whatever they'll prove in the very least, so that we have something coming in to match, to keep, keep the expenses for the board going. Because they're at the end of the mon, at the end of the year.
I think, I think the males sit right here and see exactly what, asks us what they want us to do. And I, I don't see a problem with it.
They said that they, that we had to approve a budget, and they would approve a budget. And he would present a budget, and we would approve, approve, and they'd approve whatever that they would approve. They didn't say that they want to meet again.
Yeah, they was talking about the salaries, he's, because they said they wasn't paying nothing there. That's what he sat there and said. He said, once we get the salary, the salary, what are we supposed to get? Well, I'm gonna tell you what's where. The, uh, the other salary, the city didn't even, they ain't know nothing about that.
They didn't know another employee was there, so that's something that they wanted to discuss, because they didn't even know another employee was, uh, over at the pool. All they thought was they was there. So, I don't know if they wanted to keep her.
That's the point I was making, they was making a decision, hadn't even came over to see what was going on, or see what they did, did opposition was over there. So that was, that was, that was the most, and that was the house, that was the most, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, well, and I'm, I'm not defending nobody, but the city have appointees, and the county have appointees to the commission. Now, somebody should have been going to their meeting, just like you coming over to the job meeting, because you are a appointee. Somebody should have been going over there discussing this with them.
We bring that up, but you know, I can own control what I can control.
Well, you can control the employee, and the chief of government present to the, which is probably.
Let's, let's just get a meeting set up, see if they want to set up a meeting.
I'll do my best.
And if they don't, then we'll go from there.
I will ask for a meeting with all three parties, I'll ask for it. And if it doesn't happen at the end of the year, or end of the month, they're basically not paying.
If you want to set it up for this week, it's fine, if you step out.
What's that?
If you want to set it up for this week, it's fine, you can step out.
That would be definitely gonna be this on open.
Okay, Mr. Wild.
Just remind y'all, we got a meeting and a half hour of business sitting over there, and if you gonna be unguarded, we gonna have some problem. Thank you.
We'll take it out. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, thank you, come. Ms. Chloe Washington.
Good morning, how are you all?
Hold it, this stain right here.
Good morning, how are you all? Um, I made a complaint against Mr., um, Bradford, because he, um, came out to my home, me and my landlord is in a, um, dispute. But, um, he came out to my home and he referred some information to my landlord that was being after it. So I was requesting a copy of the report, but he told me he couldn't give it. First he dodged me, and text me and told me, um, text me what you need. So I couldn't, um, get a hold of him to get the copy of the report from him, but when I did make contact with him, he told me he couldn't give me the copy of the report from where he came out to my home. Okay, my question is, uh, my question is, if he wasn't qualified to do what the house need, why did he enter into my home? And secondly, why did he submit information that is not true?
Okay, I'm gonna have to, uh, let Mr. Bradford answer that.
Good morning, board. Um, I received a call from supervisor Gaines, uh, on a possible sewage leak at a residence in the county. That's the only reason I got involved, because anything that with the property environment quality, I have to check out if it's on county property. So I went out to the resident at her home, I looked at the property, me and one of my other guys, we looked in the ditch. We didn't see any sewage, we didn't smell anything and nothing like that. At that point, uh, she's saying she had a toxic odor in the house, so anything with toxic, that's, we have to investigate it, because toxic mean it's a lot of the hood can affect many residents. So that's the only reason we went into the residence, to look and see if we smelt it, upon that, we didn't find anything. So by her being a tenant, all reports had to go to the landlord, because he's responsible for that property. We don't send, the E Q is not gonna contact, they, they gonna contact the property owner. On the report, I just told him, we didn't find anything. What she's referring to is a civil matter. I told her, we don't get involved with civil matters. I said, I'm not a home inspector, I told her that. I said, we only inspecting the property for any thing that could be contaminated or things like that. And it, I guess it got, kind of got misstrewn of what emergency management does. So I explained that to her, that we do not do home inspection, but I'm not a home inspector, but like I told her, I can't give her, she's not the van owner. The only report is, I told her, there was no find, I said, she had to go to her landlord, uh, where she's ready from, to get the report. Now, if you don't give it to her, that's a civil matter, I'm out of it.
Okay.
Well, let, let, let me, let me get y'all briefing on, on, uh, what happened. Uh, I got a call, uh, and I didn't know, this is, uh, and this is my first time after seeing her. I got a call from this, uh, that she was one of my constituents in the area, and she had been having a toxic smell in her house. If I'm correct, you said the health department told you to call your supervisor?
No, the health department told me to call city inspection. City inspection said, because I was in the county, they could not come out. So they told me to contact my, I called the health department back, and they said, well, maybe you can contact your, um, supervisor for that district. When I made contact with you, I did not say anything about sewage on the ground, I did not say anything about anything. Or, or to that nature or environmental, I actually told you, I don't see any sewage on the ground, and the smell that I am smelling. Now, I have smelled sewage in the past, but the smell that I am smelling now is like a toxic kink filler-like smell that's making me and my children sick when we enter the home. Okay, upon, I, I also told you, I said, um, atmospheric have been out, and they had checked with carbon monoxide, and the gas is turned off. I had them to leave it off, because they said they're not entering to the homes because of COVID guidelines. Okay, you say, well, I refer you to EMS, Mr. Bradford gonna call me. Upon talking to Mr. Bradford, I informed Mr. Bradford, the gas is off. So that mean that, I told him atmospheric is the same thing that I told you. I actually have camera footage of my, at my house, where I told Mr. Bradford that the smell that I am smelling is not a sewage smell, I have smelled sewage smell in the past. But my concern is this, if he was coming into my home and didn't, everything that he didn't see, nothing need to be fixed. Uh, and he's saying that, that is a landlord matter, he entered my home without even having anything to check for carbon monoxide. So why did he enter? And then after that, I had a licensed plumber to come out, and they found the, um, the, where he sur- surveyed the house in the area. They found the, 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 um, smell pipe was not above the house and like they should. But he told the landlord, it was nothing to be fixed. So I wanna know why my children helped, my help, our safety, all of that is in danger because of misleading information. So if he didn't see anything, or if he couldn't do testing that the house need, why did he enter into my doors?
Well, this is the thing, a- and I'll say this, when you call, and I, and I called him because I said, it's something, a- and I make sure I understood this. That, you know, I told you that the supervisor himself, that we, we all have twenty-five feet off the ceiling, and we couldn't, there was a problem out there, we couldn't. I was gonna try to find you somebody who could help you, did I not?
Yes, you did.
And that's what I told you, and so I actually called emergency management to figure out, who can I get to help you? And that's why, and I sent him out and let him talk, uh, just try to figure out what was happening. But, I mean, it, it's like, I mean, I'm not saying what's happened, but how long have you had this smell going on?
I have had this problem with this unit ever since I moved back here and I, I started living in that home. My concern is, it's not a problem with you, or you trying to seek help for me. My problem is the information that Mr. Bradford referred to my landlord, and my landlord referred to me as he not gonna do it, because the EMS , um, director told him it was nothing need to be fixed. But the EMS director, Mr. Bradford, came to my home, he didn't have anything to even check with carbon monoxide. So if he entered into my home, why did he?
Ma'am, I just do a break to enter, I asked you, you was on the property, we didn't go inside the house, I asked you could we come in? Because you said we had a toxic odor. Anything toxic is harmful to the environment, like you said, when I went into the home, we didn't.
But I told you inside the home, you didn't have.
Let him speak.
Ma'am president, ma'am president, I'm gonna make a suggestion. Gray, Mr. Bradford, talk to the board.
Yeah.
Miss, uh, Washington, talk to the board, don't talk to each other.
Right, a- as I said before, this is a civil matter. I only went in the home because the word toxic. Toxic mean it's harmful, can kill anybody, that's the only reason. Your wording is what you say. When I, when we went in the home, we did not smell anything toxic, because you around something toxic, you'll show symptoms. I, I, sadly ask, um, the lady that's living there, if you got any doctoral reports, did they say anything, you need to refer it to your landlord, who you renting from? I cannot make those decisions. In my report, I did not say, I did not do a home inspection or anything, I just said, I looked at the, the stated facts of what I visually saw and gave it to the landlord. Now, whatever he makes, that's his decision, that's his property, he can do that, because the county have no codes. We have no building codes, whether, I was just only looking for things that's harmful to life or harm to any individual in there, as I stated to the individual. Now, anything that you need to bring up, I told you, you can direct it to the landlord. I cannot give any documents to the person that's not the landlord. So she will have to request that through court to get that from him. So that alleviates me from the problem. I don't walk around, I didn't, I didn't tell her, I wasn't on scene to do a, a carbon monoxide testing number, I was just doing a visual check of the property, because supervisor Gaines asked me to, and tried to give her some insight what she need to do. So at that point, I gave her a recommendation what she need to do.
You, you asked to go into her house and she said okay?
Yeah, she was there, we, yeah, so that's why I said, I did not touch it, we did not, we did not go in the property till she got there. So that's what I'm saying, so she invited us in.
No.
Okay, Ms. Wild.
No, my understanding was when Mr.
Gaines.
Gaines told me that he was gonna send him out. He told me, okay, my question is this, if he wanna go that route? If he was coming in, if you, you can't, you can't always smell toxic. So what was he coming inside the property for? You can't always smell toxic.
He said he had a toxic odor. He checked out to see if there's a toxic odor, hold on a second. He checked out whether there's a toxic odor with your permission.
No, without my permission, let's say.
He knocked on my door, he asked to come in.
No, I wasn't even there.
You wasn't at the home?
I pulled up, he called me and told me he was there, he was gonna do a walk around of the property.
Okay.
I wasn't even there.
He called you, you said he was gonna walk around?
Yes, he told me.
And you said, no, don't do that.
Outside, but inside, I didn't never say, okay, you can go inside. He told me that he was gonna check the property to see. He never said that, oh, well, I don't have a property permit to do this testing or none of that. I'm not agreeing to him going inside, what was he going inside for?
To check if there was a toxic odor, which is what you.
How would he measure the toxic odor with smell, if that's the case?
If that's the report, there's a toxic odor, then obviously there would be a smell, there'd be an odor.
Not, not necessarily, the problem when I.
Not necessarily, if there was a report of an odor, then yes, there would, by necessity of having an odor, there would be a smell. Else there wouldn't be a toxic odor.
Now, now, I asked you this question, were you there when he went into your home?
I was there, but I, I didn't give him the permission to go in. He, 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 he presented himself.
I mean, you just let him walk on into your home with no permission?
I had, I had a camera footage, he presented himself as somebody that could come in and test and do what they supposed to do.
And you said it was okay?
No, I, I let him in, because he. Because he presented himself like he was, first of all, he told me that he was coming in, uh, coming to survey the property outside, he said, I got to go inside to the property. I opened the door and I let him in, and I had it on my camera footage.
That's, that's why he was in there.
Okay, but why didn't he tell me he had to go inside? Why did he wanna go outside?
Smell of toxic.
He said he couldn't smell it outside, so why was he wanting, why would he wanna go inside? If he couldn't smell it outside, why would he wanna go inside?
As far as here is it?
Go ahead.
As far as any of his documents are concerned, the process for requesting those things, you make a public records request, and we can look at whether we can release it or not. That's done through the Chancery Clerk's office, you file a public records request for any document.
Okay, can I have a copy of the minutes on this meeting next week?
Yes, you can.
Uh.
Go ahead, supervisor.
When you explaining to someone in the public that don't understand public requests, you got to break it down to them and explain on what a public request is, where she know how to go get a public request. You just can't say go get a public request.
Yeah.
And the citizen, I'm gonna be like, what is that?
If you go to the Chancery Clerk's office and ask for a public records request, that's the.
That's her.
Office right across the street, they will guide you through that.
Okay, this young lady came up by my shop and told me everything that I heard today, told me she had called you and gave me the whole rundown, and, uh, I'm gonna tell her that, to my knowledge, that, oh, the sewage and stuff like that, that we can figure this out. Now, for all these other smells, I, I, I don't, I didn't even know we do that. To be honest with you, I didn't even know we do that. So, it came by my house, at the end of the day, I did tell her it sounded like a silver matter to me. That's what I told her, but the problem is this, what I'm seeing, she seem to think, if, when you have a toxic smell, you just can't smell it with the human nose, because all of us don't smell the same. Because sometime I can go in a place, deep, say they smell something, I don't even smell it. But I guess we, this is a learning thing for all of us.
Yes, it is.
And in the near future, I guess we are having things different, uh, all of us will have it different. But from, from what I'm hearing, where you need to go from now is with a public request to Ms. Brandon Lewis' office to see, can you get a copy of the report that you want without going to court, I guess, is that not?
Yeah, that's where you start, is with the, for any document that the county has.
And can I get a printout of what Mr. Bradford is actually able to test for? What's his qualifications, what he able to test for? If, uh, i- is he able to test anything else in that home besides carbon monoxide?
That, I doubt he has a piece of, a document that says what he can and can't test for. If he does, you can request it.
Okay, so, uh, can you give me a printout of the duty of the, um, director EMS?
Again, if you make, if you make a request, public records, you can ask for all those documents, yes, sir.
Okay, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And what did I get the minutes to this meeting?
They, they're.
There wasn't any more actually.
There'll be a code next month, and then it's passed.
And they'll be available for inspection eight to five every day.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, in a city, welcome in, please, miss. Thank you. All right, the partner report. From Ms. Peggy. Let me give Ms. Mayor Peggy first.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Ms. Mayor Peggy. Ms. Mayor Peggy.
Okay, good morning. I have, um, two things that need to be put in the minutes and, um, sign, we have applied for the CARES Act COVID reimbursement request uh, by the state, or from Supreme Court, I have one for fifteen hundred. That was to pay for, uh, using the convention center when Judge Brown used it. The other is for five thousand dollars to purchase, um, COVID materials such as masks, sanitizer, stuff like that, that I have to expend by the end of November.
Okay, you heard the request. You heard the motion, got a motion by Supervisor Gaines. Got a second by Supervisor Milton, end of discussion.
I want a discussion, I have, uh, I know we got a lot of departments, uh, in the county, uh, so Brad, this don't come under your department for PPPs giving, giving, uh, I mean, PPP giving equipment to departments that needed, uh, she need to do it the way she done, I, I'm just asking.
This is just the youth courts.
Yeah, courts set up their own thing, but she still part of the county, she, they don't give them stuff, but that, they set aside over forty-fourth part of them, they have money set aside for that.
Ms. Peggy.
So, this is the same thing that Judge Sanders, Judge Blackwell did.
Yeah.
So it's basically reimbursement.
The AOC has excess money.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, guys have a motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all you have?
That's it.
I have three board orders, the mobile homes traders, that went to the, uh, state after the third year of being sold. From what I understand, they did not belong on those parcels anyway. So, um, we're asking that they be deleted for eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. And all monies be refunded back to the purchasers at the land sale.
So these are on these tax sales because they're sales of, of, of mobile homes, we should, in a land sale?
Right, and they're on the correct parcels now, and the grand total of all three of them for those three years is three hundred dollars being lost.
You have paid award for that?
Yes.
You heard the request about the case. Got a motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Wilson, end of discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, guys have a motion carried unanimously.
I'm done.
Okay, great. Oh, let's get Ms. Anthony Howell, and go back to Ken.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We appreciated the elevation on the agenda. However, we have some items to be determined or executed in session, and so, um,
Okay.
We are, we are, um, requesting to be further down the list. However, I do have an audit report for Ms. King and the rest of you all would like a copy of it. Uh, I have extra copies. Uh, the month of August was a good month for the report. Uh, I do have, uh, a copy of the approved budget by the board commission. So that it can be filed with the board.
Extra budget. Annually, we have to approve the fourth budget before October one.
The law states that as a political contingent of our county, we have, we have to, uh, submit our anybody to judicial justice.
You got some copies?
I got a copy.
I do. Angela, do you have some additional one?
She's a mother.
Yeah.
He may have.
Ms. Anthony Howell.
According to Mozart. You give me those things. I have.
Yeah.
You give me all of them.
Give it to you.
Yeah, I have enough copies.
Okay.
Now, I better let it go to the first, we can.
So we, uh, wait till the attorney get that. Okay, the only thing you have left now, sir, is a consent. So we need to approve your budget too.
Yes. Yeah, you got it. Approve the salary and the budget, those are two things you have to do.
Is the salary in this budget or?
There's no, right, it's, it's. Yeah, salary.
The sex was included in this, oh, I see, it's salary.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's under.
Yeah, I see. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this budget.
Okay, I got motion by Supervisor Gray.
So.
We got motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor. Supervisor Gaines. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, guys have a motion carried unanimously. Now, thank you, you have anything else?
Yes, so.
You gotta be determined at least.
Yes, I could be determined.
Right, uh, the commission on, last week on the fifteen accepted bids for phase one of the new Southwick with Logan Dock, uh, there were four bids submitted. They were comparable, they were competitive, and they're on their bid list right now. Uh, so, within a few weeks, we should actually have an award, and we should proceed to initiate phase one of the new Southwick with Logan Dock. And the last acknowledgement we would like to make is that the board, uh, has secured on, uh, signed the contract, three declines. Uh, their overall effect on an annual basis is to be determined, but they all have placed their first budgets in our possession, they're in the warehouse, and we're off and running, and our new negotiations on current contracts are on the way. Uh, which, two of these is what we'll talk about in executive session.
And all of our, all of our lease payments are coming in?
Uh, you have all of those.
Check that, Angie.
I answered you, go to the bar.
All right, Mr. Bradford.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Mr. Howard, for, uh, your, uh, connections you have to make sure that, uh, we get everything we need and, 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 and not asking us for too much money, we reject that.
All right, good morning, board, everybody inside of the board, so I just got a couple things this morning, uh, looking at our COVID cases right now, we looking at a hundred twenty-nine active, uh, spread throughout the county and the city. A great thing, we have forty-seven percent vaccinated, uh, so hopefully we going in the right direction and stuff like that, but we encourage everybody, you know, when you time, get your vaccinations and stuff like that, because that's gonna help us, you know, get through this pandemic and stuff like that, so we looking good on that. And we also encourage, you know, if we have events, you know, we try to get back to normalcy, cause this is the song we got to live with. Uh, continue having the outdoors event, we pushing outdoors events, if you can, they start cooling off now, so, uh, people gonna wanna start doing a lot more stuff outdoors, you know, rather than indoors, that we can do that. Uh, and also we got flu season coming up, so make sure you get your flu shots, um.
Let me, let me say this, uh, Mr. Bradford's on the vaccination while he was on it. Um, what was that, Saturday, it was, uh, Mississippi mobile vaccination was here on Saturday at the Macedonia Church, uh, ten to three. They did vaccination, vaccination, we quarantined the city and this vaccination and the hospital. And it was right at a hundred people that attended and got vaccinated. So that was great, and, and most of them was the booster shots, but we did have others to come and get their vaccination also.
Right, and, and we're gonna encourage, you know, those, uh, pop-up vaccination, uh, mobile units, to try to get them in communities and stuff like that. Cause a lot of time people, if you go to their communities, they'll sneak out and get a shot, they don't want nobody to know they got a shot, but, you know, put it in a isolated area, people don't want nobody seeing them getting a shot, so we're gonna, we're gonna continue to work and push that, uh, till we get through the pandemic though now.
And they said they would also, if you got people that, uh, cannot, elderly, so that cannot make it, you know, they would set up something there where they can go and make sure they get vaccinated. And, uh, they'll be back on the twenty-eighth of October, twenty-third of October.
Okay, uh, with that being said, I want to ask the board let us go and extend our COVID-nineteen proclamation that we already had in place, uh, through, uh, next month.
Motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Gaines, end of discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, guys have a motion carried unanimously.
Okay, uh, also, we want to, with that, we want to extend the mask requirement indoors until October thirty-first.
Heard the motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Gaines, end of discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, guys have a motion carried unanimously.
Okay, uh, for the request, Trevor, I got to meet with the, uh, state meeting director in Pearl on Wednesday.
Heard the request of the, uh, emergency management, got a motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Gaines, end of discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, guys have a motion carried unanimously.
That's all, I have a big report for the board.
I, I, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, and I was, uh, after the Dallas Cowboys, they were ruined yesterday, that gave me a little bit, but, you know, I turned to, uh, I guess it's I don't know, the CNN or whatever, and they made me, and I seen how they're talking to this, they were doing, they had a comment that Mississippi leads the nation in COVID death rate. They say Mississippi, this come out the Democrat, Mississippi has surpassed New Jersey as the state with the highest rate of COVID death in the whole United States of America. That is a concern, and I don't know where we stand as a county, but that is a concern if, if we have surpassed everybody else in the, in the United States of America when it comes to this, uh, to me, I mean, we gotta start doing something different, we can't keep doing the same thing and getting different results. So, I understand we want to stay open, we don't want us to stay open, but we got to do it in a safe way. And, uh, we cannot continue to have super spreadage, um, cause uh, all of the long, from what I read in the actual Democrat, they say we lost twenty-two people to COVID in August alone, that's a lot of people to lose in one month. So, me personally, uh, I'm gonna encourage this community to go get your shot. Keep yourself safe and keep other people safe, and continue to wear your mask and stay a distance, because this gonna get worse, it's not gonna get any better, when the winter months come, last time this happened, it got a little worse. So, if you wanna be around in January of it, you need to go get your shot. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Supervisor Gray. Let's get Mrs. Stiltsman, we'll have her on the floor.
Good morning, board. I have one request that's been sent in today by Verizon. They request a permit to place additional equipment on an existing American Tower Corporation tower located at fifty-seven Denbrook Road. Project will include the placement of six antennas, six remote radio units, and associated equipment, and removal of three antennas and three remote units. This is an upgrade. The placement of this antenna, of this additional equipment will improve Verizon's service along the sixty-one ninety-eight eighty-four corridor coming into Natchez, and portions of northern Adams County. Order requirements have been met, fees have been paid, and I request the board to approve this Verizon wireless permit application, please.
You heard the request?
Uh-huh.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Wilson, end of discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, guys have a motion carried unanimously. You have anything else?
That's all I have.
That's all you have, okay, thank you. Mr. Brandon Gordon, you have anything?
Charlie.
Mr. Grant, you have anything?
No.
You don't have anything? Mr. Ronnie Dollar.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
First thing I have is two new employees. First employee being Walker Thornton. Hiring him as an operator, Angela, you have this.
I have the package.
Okay, second employee being Terry Floyd.
Okay, we're gonna have to get out there itself, I'm out.
Okay, ready, or you got, you want to do it?
You want me to?
I agree.
It doesn't matter.
Uh, the Walker Thornton will start at twelve fifty an hour. After six months probation, it goes thirteen fifty an hour.
And the salary, twenty-six thousand?
Correct.
Go ahead.
The second employee being Terry Floyd, uh, truck driver. Start, pay will be eleven fifty, after six months, going to twelve fifty. And that will be twenty-three nine twenty.
Okay.
Please attach it, please.
Have you heard the request?
Uh-huh. Sir.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Gaines, end of discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, guys have a motion carried, go ahead.
I had an employee, um, last day was September ninth, two thousand twenty-one, his name was Jalen Irving. I'm asking for, to give me permission to advertise to, or, to buy housing, of course.
Heard the request?
Uh-huh.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Wilson, end of discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, guys have a motion carried.
The other thing I have is two illegal dump sites, uh, one being on Highway eighty-four, number two, and the other being on Highland Oaks.
Motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Gaines, enter discussion. All in favor say aye, all opposed nay, and I'll have the motion carried unanimously. Anything else?
Yes, ma'am. I have a new call-out person on the north side of town, Kevin Sims. Call-out person before us who left, so I replaced him with Kevin Sims. He don't have the phone and the truck to call out for us on that side of town.
Kevin Sims, yeah, I do have.
Last thing I have, my central goes out to the Riley Hayes family, his employee of Adams County Road Department, passing. Just fast, we'll bring it up before the board. That's all I have.
Robbins Lake Anne, we got the rightaways on that?
We're ready.
Yes. So ready to go on? On, you know, N L K, the second emergency, you know, we're right on that one?
Yes, he, you know, he got started the last board meeting. I mentioned he got started. He was waiting on the to want to come in because of trees. The landowners or herself might have done something to the trees, so he's waiting on that, then he's gonna get started, which should be another couple of weeks out.
Before he started?
No. I mean, he started, he's already grew a lot, got it covered up. There's a lot of bigger trees, and get a lawnmower and remove those trees, and then get started. It should be about two weeks before I'll shut that road down. He's had enough work going, and we'll shut the M S K down and rewrite the traffic. But that's what we have on that. But we ain't starting on Robbins Lake.
You go on. On that one, are we gonna, we have supplies to buy and we're gonna do the labor on it?
Yeah, we got options to buy concrete, so we're gonna do the work.
Are we still on our state comp, our six-month bids on that stuff that we can buy?
So, Rob?
Yes, sir.
Explain to me what y'all are gonna do over there?
On Robbins Lake, we're gonna dig the old, there's three thirty-six inch pipes in place now, and they have one that's failed. What we're gonna do is go in and put three new pipes, lower the pipes, and put three forty-eight inch pipes, lower those pipes down, lower than the thirty-sixes, pour concrete, hit wall, and then put three cyclones, one for each pipe, just like they are now, that's there. But we will lower these pipes, and they will be bigger pipes, and they should, you know, be able to handle more. And then we gotta fix the back slope on Robbins Lake, you know, back.
And we gonna do that work?
Correct.
Next thing, Madam President, uh, did you tell me what's going on at Johnson's, uh, three feet up?
Johnson's, fourteen Johnson's, right? Uh, we spoke with the contractor, he was ordering the materials. I see the box is in for one forty East Franklin Street. It's sitting on site, the concrete box. So he should have that box too. Once he gets that box, he said he was starting our last board meeting, he was waiting to get in. So I'm hoping it came in when he picked the one up for our parking lot. See, you know, Grant, if you come in.
That's the box sitting in your parking lot right now.
That is for Johnson Circle.
He was talking about starting this morning. I don't know.
Okay, well, the box.
About the rain or windy, so he was supposed to start this morning.
Yeah, I saw him out there working on Friday, so I pulled over to say, we starting on Johnson Circle, and he said that they got delayed and they were working on it.
Yeah, normally in that rain, uh.
Well, in the rain, the box was delayed as delivery, and he was apologetic, saying, look, I ordered, told you it would be here, and didn't, didn't show up.
But he is sitting there, the box sitting out there right now, he has the box.
Because if, had he had it, he could have started. It was before that, that rain. Had he started, he could have done it.
He just, he said he didn't have a tractor on the side out there, so they just dropped it out there. So my only other question is, uh, I mean, what are they gonna do out here since the roadrunner got so close to this naked house? Are they gonna try to give her some room where she can walk around?
They will be back once they put the box in, here, out, they'll work from her out back to the box and get that door back, probably pull it to two feet.
All right, I got, I got, over the weekend, I was out on Sterns and Baker Drive, up behind town out there. We have abandoned property, but they needed to be cut. We can probably send the tractor to cut it back, 'cause I had several. And I went out there, um, Saturday morning, went back. It's the house on the corner of Baker. You can't actually see where the grass had grew up, so when we cut it down, and I'll get the exact address, 'cause it actually needs to be cleaned up, Scott.
Is it a mobile home sitting on that lot?
Uh.
Is it a mobile home sitting on that lot?
It's a house that was a mobile home on here. I think they cleaned up, it's right on that corner right there. And they cleaned up right there, but the house, 'cause the guy, one, I had two calls. Uh, Mr. Harris called here, and the other guy that owned the property with the trailer, he said, well, I have a sign, I'm like, y'all, we had to clean up a difference, should have been cleaned up, and you actually can't see coming out of Baker Street. So we will get back, you know, cut what you can with the rightaway, and I think they can see around here. We can get it back in here for a vintage property.
You have anything else?
We did one of them, one of the vintage properties.
But it's, it's right there in the same area.
And then they worked on one on Burtel.
Yeah, that one needs to be.
They did do that on.
They did murder?
Yeah, they, they, I don't know if they finished, they started.
Yeah, they did.
It's terrible.
Yeah. You can get down.
Madam President, the only thing I hate about, uh, what's happening, oh, do that, this, 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 it need to be done because it's a, a, a bad situation for the people that live next door to these properties. But then we adding, uh, a fee to whoever buy that property. And then, if we continue to keep cutting this property and adding that fee to it, ain't nobody gonna say, all right, because it's gonna be, the house is not gonna be worth what you paying for because of all the additional fees that we adding to it. I mean, that just, I'd like to see some, some of these properties get put back on the tax road. I ain't saying it's off the tax road. But when you charging fifteen hundred, and it might be more than that, because this place is in bad shape. And you adding it to the taxes, when somebody get ready to buy this house, and, and they wanna buy it, so probably now you got to pay six thousand dollars in, in costs that we put on there, if anyone's joking.
Yeah, so if they, it goes to tax sale, and if they don't get it sold, then it goes to the state. And then someone has to go to the state and basically pay that back to get it out.
That is.
Either it's paid on a tax, when it goes to tax sale, or it does get paid, and if someone wants to get it, they know right up front this is the cost to get that done.
So we got something in place when they go to the tax sales, telling them, because some of these unhidden fees, when somebody bought a piece of property, they said, well, I ain't know I had to pay six thousand more dollars. So all this is totally.
It's part of the tax sale. So you got the tax, let's say the taxes are a hundred dollars, and fifteen hundred dollars of damages, it's sold for, you know, the fifteen hundred plus a hundred of tax. So it's, it's, it goes into the tax sale, so there's no hidden fee. Well, people won't buy it if it's too much, like you said, they go to strike.
That's what I mean, the property worth fifteen hundred dollars, and they got three thousand dollars worth of fees on it, people don't buy it.
Well, you know, we talked, and I remember, we talked about this, oh, two years ago, about getting the Secretary of State down here to try to get some of those, those properties off the state and back into the tax rolls. And they said they were gonna come down and impose it, but I don't know, maybe we can start the discussion with them again. And if, if it's worth fifteen hundred, then if we put it on auction and it raises fifteen hundred, then that's what it'll raise as opposed to getting whatever it's in. I know the county just wants to get people to cut the grass, and so it's very rare that we actually have to, I say that, it's getting less rare, but it used to be real rare that we have to actually cut them ourselves, so.
More this year than been.
Is there more this year?
Correct.
And maybe that's because people can't travel as much, because a lot of it's out-of-town properties, and they say, oh, we'll send somebody down.
We'll reach out to see if they're, see if they're on this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. John Ford, with I M S.
Good morning, board. Got a couple of items, just want to give you off the on twenty-sixth, twenty-first, we received an executive notice of award from N R C S on Friday. So that means we can go get it and officially begin our design. And so what we're gonna do is we're gonna work the next two weeks to get a design completed for that property and submit it to N R C S for their review. It's our intention to submit two designs to them, uh, options. One, it'll be a pre-fully designed, if the stuff was overdesigned at the time, and then we're gonna do the designs within what they had recommended at the time, and then we'll go from there. And if we can try to get our original design completed, then we're gonna try to do that. We will be submitting two designs to them in the next couple of weeks. All right, four E W Ps, four oh-six E W P sites on number four. We began a survey of those sites. We got one site, the Liberty Road, that's been surveyed. And we began the design on that. At this point in time, the design for Liberty Road is sitting at fifty percent. We were delayed last week due to weather, so we're not able to survey, but we're back on it this week to get the other five sites surveyed, so we can get the design done on those. And then as far as the starting project, we received, we executed a program form from you guys. We're gonna submit that to state aid. As it relates to those properties, two of those roads, steam plant and, uh, pine ridge, they are not all state aid roads. Therefore, when we submit this program form, a portion of the, portion of the road that are not state aid will be submitted as non-participating. That means that we were doing the design for the entire property, but then accountable to discerning how they were paid for and quantity associated with the non-participating items. And what we are going to do, we think going to get a design together sometime will give you a better price as opposed to trying to divide them up and get them separately. So that's just the update that we have for those two properties. Are there any questions?
I'm excited, um, probably not sure if they can, when, when they did the payment on that, uh, steam plant, you know, a couple of years ago, they did re-strat it from one port, you know, I think.
They re-strat it.
Off the edge of port, right there. So, you know, acting on steam fact, I don't know exactly what or exactly portion of state aid coming from falls from outside in, and I think that almost, come almost to state aid's part. Uh, I don't know exactly how much of it, because, you know, they had been striding for a few years ago, but coming from steam plant to what, maybe a mile? Maybe a mile up?
Did it bring, did it bring?
Bring it, yeah.
Before that project stops it? Before state aid related, falls from outside?
Okay, well, we'll be, we'll be, we'll, we'll be within, that's the part that actually need the main striding. But we will actively, uh, in scope of, uh, under, under state aid with that project.
Now, when it comes to pine ridge, on part of pine ridge, that state aid is.
Down bottom, so for pine ridge, if you start from airport out.
From airport out, but what he. From Turteau toward the bottom.
Yeah.
Turteau Road to that area, toward the bottom of state aid.
Yeah.
Really on backup this side of Turteau Road.
Yeah.
You know, where Kurt Gutter, in that section of state aid.
Well, we definitely need that striding from there, 'cause you got those three, four neighborhoods right there, and you have no line in the road, or country road, with, uh, with the counter came in and tried to open the dugers, and sometimes you out there, you driving in six to twelve inches of water, and you definitely can't see. And it's, it's a great need for that, no line in that. You cover that hole from that point on, you cover from the bottom of Alice Bottom all the way back, uh, to town. So you, you got those, uh, the equipment, the road, uh, the pine mound, the, uh, it's about four or five streets plus eight, you got, and all the down bottom, so you got all those folks having that road. And they'll have a center line, and don't have any white lines on. And it's now, the whole water, so we definitely need to look into it.
I guess if you do that, you gonna give us how many miles and the cost of it to state aid for you.
Right.
And we can take that back out, how many miles is left, and do the company.
And so what we do is, that has to be submitted to state aid, so I just got the documents submitted to state aid. So what we do is, simply when we set program form, it gets approved, so by state aid, by program form, getting approved by state, we go ahead and try to deny and try to skip that process.
Yeah.
And in relation to the, the survey that we received today, once he's provided the information that he needs, he provide us the information, the survey that he needs, and then we'll give our survey department.
All right, thank you. That's all you have? All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Darrow, is there anything?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, just have a morning. Uh, we're looking to do a mask and hand center power giveaway on October second. That's for serving. We're going, we're looking at from eight to twelve, or until we run out. Where it's safe.
Safe room. All right, that's all you have?
That's all.
All right, thank you. Share.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning, sir.
Morning. Always saving this place up here. Um, I just, I want you all to know, we are, we got eighteen little load of fresh fruit and vegetables that are coming down tomorrow, they were donated to the sheriff's office for us to give out to the youth. It's gonna be from eleven to one at the safe room, so if any of you all want to come out, give out, load these bags up, the more the better. That's from eleven to one tomorrow, the safe room, fresh fruit and vegetable giveaway. The other thing I have is, one thing I'm, I know I have to turn before executive session, it's gonna be the rest of the street of jail, Scott, so we'll get to that. I have two new hires that I want to, for the refrost managers as well. One is gonna be, uh, Marshall Edmonds, E D, M O N, D S. Starting jail, salary of twelve hours and sixty cents an hour, annual twenty-six, two oh eight.
You heard the request of the sheriff and the motion. Yeah, we can't do it, we got.
Do it, I do it.
Yeah. Who's up first?
The other one is gonna be Mackenzie Taylor, starting as a deputy sheriff.
All right, go get here.
The other one is, uh, Mackenzie Taylor, starting as a deputy sheriff, at sixteen oh one an hour, annual rate of thirty-three thousand, two hundred eighty dollars.
You heard the request of the sheriff, that motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Gaines, enter discussion. All in favor say aye, all opposed nay, and I'll have the motion carried unanimously.
Is the police department, anybody left? Only one of them, but let me say this about one that was working over there. When she resigned from the police department, she didn't even have an application in with us. So she waited two weeks to decide whether she was gonna even stay in law enforcement tonight, and then she applied with us, so. It wasn't like she just left there and came, she, she had plenty of options, but she chose to come and apply to Sheriff's Office.
Well, she did, she did a good job over there.
She did.
Safe room, my hospitals.
Mackenzie's.
Lost material.
She did, uh, and, and she's not fresh out of boot camp or anything like that, so there's, you know, she just wanted to change the scenery. And we needed a body. We needed, not just a body, but a good officer, so. The other thing I have is, I'm gonna bring this up first, Scott, before I get into all the other stuff. It's in reference to Southwest Mental Health, and the facilities that they're gonna open up on October first over there. They're asking to partner with the sheriff's office to provide food, three days a week, three days a, three times a day, seven days a week over there. And so in order for that to happen, of course, we have a budget amendment, but they would reimburse. Everybody tracking. They know anything about this?
The crisis stabilization unit is supposed to be open in the next, what, week and a half, October one. They don't have any way to supply food for the, for people that are there, patients that are there, so they've asked the sheriff's office and the jail to supply food for. And when Tony asked him how much it would cost to do all that, we, actually, they did talk about this, maybe June or July.
We talked about it back in June.
Yeah. And they just now got back to us last week. Originally, they weren't supposed to transport, I mean, we weren't supposed to move the food ourselves, they were gonna come pick it up, but they said they don't have someone to pick it up. but they said they don't have someone to pick it up, so. Thank you, got more?
I got the numbers on it. I got what it would cost us in order to provide the food.
Can we do that?
Yeah, they would.
They're across the street from the old community hospital.
Oh, is it?
Yes, it's a great thing for our area.
Yeah, we can contract with them to do it.
And that's gonna help us keep, gonna help consumers out of our jail, so I'm glad you're having this counter.
Oh, we're, we are getting.
That's what I was about to get into, but I didn't know if you all were aware of this or not, so.
It's been, like I said, it's been several months, 'cause we sent, we talked about it and sent it over to them, and then didn't hear anything back from them, and then and they came back saying, yeah, we really need it, we're starting next week, and, uh, we need to gather for fifty. It's across the street from the old, uh, community hospital at, I think Dr. Isles's old office, things like that. No, that was?
On the right side.
It's across the street from those, yeah.
But I was gonna give you all the numbers. Uh, Scott, it was a little different from what we thought, but I got the mileage on here. We did the mileage, we did the cost per day, uh, the trips, three times a day, with salaries and just everything included. And it actually came with like thirty-five thousand, four twenty-four forty. So, if we are to, if they are in agreement with these numbers, which I guess we need to find out from them, whether they're in agreement, that's what I would need the, the food budget to change for, um, on our end, so that they can reimburse it, whatever. If the board's in agreement with this.
What's the number again?
Thirty-five thousand, four twenty-four forty.
And that's what, a month?
That's what, no, uh, that's what a year.
And that's what it costs?
You're talking four to eight people.
Okay.
Thirty-five thousand, four twenty-four forty is what we came up with. And that's covering food, uh, they're gonna direct pay cooks, and that's the mileage. And, 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 uh, hours to actually cook the food, so that the county can reimburse all of them.
You heard the request?
Uh. We, we don't need a contract before we do this?
What's that?
I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, there's gotta be a contract.
Yeah, I'm just making a dollar wire right now. So that everybody's on the same page with this.
So they are gonna give us a contract?
Yeah, we had to get.
Do we have it already?
No, we don't, but, we don't, but.
I'm not gonna drive a contract unless they agree to our product.
Yeah, they need to agree to the price first, but I want the food, you know.
Have you submitted that price to them yet?
Obviously.
Okay, you just submitted it on.
Like I said, they contacted us Thursday or Friday on that, saying, we need this, and what we need transportation, so to get back to town and share. But if, if it's opened up, it'll be a great thing, get a lot of those holding cells freed up for people that are charged for crime versus people that are just impaled, civilly committed.
You have anything else, sir?
Of course I do. I have, I have plenty left, believe it or not. The other thing that I wanna revisit was this, you know, we just had a budget meeting, and we are extremely appreciative of the five percent raise that, that the county gave for everybody. But there was still one, uh, one issue unresolved with Sheriff's Office. Back in June, I came to the board about some things, where I promoted some people, had to put some other people in place. And you all told me to come back later on the pay portion of it. Well, I'm back now, because these people have been working in these positions ever since June. And I'm not asking for back pay or anything like that, but I am back here asking for them to be paid for the positions that they are in now. And this was from back in June. So I know through the names, or ever, but I was, and the reason why I'm bringing it up is because I know in one of those meetings where we were talking, I know the county administrator mentioned that, when she proposed the budget, that this wasn't a part of it.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm bringing it to the board now, asking. I still have, I don't have a budget, so I can't give you the numbers to see whether it's already there or not, so I'm, I'm sure it's not, but she said it was.
Alright, let us, let her look at some things, and we're gonna get back with you on this by the next week, is that okay? Can we do it at the next week?
That's fine, you all need names, or?
I think you have some paperwork here, you have a lot of paperwork here.
Alright.
Yeah.
That's fine. The other thing I have is federally, vocal budget, so we're gonna get back to you the next week on that.
Yes.
Alright. Federally, vocal, nationwide, cut budgets everywhere, so they kinda dip it up the money all over the place. And so our vocal budget was cut. We proposed a budget of a little over three hundred and sixty-four thousand, but we actually got a letter of awards there, of like a little over one fifty-six. So what I'm proposing to the board is, I wanna, I'm gonna take one person off and put it in one of the empty slots I have for the deputies, that way that's not over there in Chris, we put the staff, we put the, the other two staffs, so that I don't have to cut them completely. The other thing that we made is, either moving out the, moving out of that building, or asking the board, um, to pay the rent for the rest of the year to honor the contract. And that's kinda where I'm at on this thing.
You said you asked us to pay the rent for the rest of the year for the contract, but we're not gonna be in that building?
I wanna move them out, but I'm not sure if I can legally get out of this, what I'm getting.
Out of that contract?
Under the contract, and, and I'm not sure whether we can break it or not, and so if not, I'm gonna have to utilize it.
Yeah, you put under a lease, and you might have money anyway. And that's not.
So we ended up a lease, and we can put Kenny and Tony right there?
I'm not, I can't say that.
Well, would you review the lease and not show?
Yeah.
What the lease actually said?
Because if the lease, if the lease can be voided, which is.
That's down to your dollars a month, your, your big cost is really your people.
Yes.
Yeah, but still, how long is the warranty? How long is, uh, the agreement is for? When does it end?
Yes.
I recall correctly, I remember Scott having to change, I think he changed from year to year, but we need to see it.
Yeah, but I'm talking about, we, when, we started, and when is the ending?
Vocal, vocal starts when, is it, it's in, uh, I think it's in like November or something.
So it should be ending in the next month? Does it end? Does it end in October? Starts in July, right?
We need to see it.
No, it's, the, 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 starts in July? No, 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 I'm talking about the three days, the three weeks.
The lease.
Somebody has to have that lease.
Let me look at one thing, hold on. Looks like it was, it started July, the first of twenty twenty.
Oh, twenty twenty?
Mm-hmm. Now, I don't accept. But I don't think, truth be told, I don't think a new lease has been signed. I don't think a new lease has been signed. We need to look into it, because it, because if I don't.
If a new lease hasn't been signed, then we really paying on month to month right now.
I believe that's what it is, but I need that confirmed.
Yeah.
Okay.
I need that confirmed, because that's the case then, what's awarded, because of the other two, and I can move the other one into a slot that I don't even have for two years.
Now, heard your quest? Okay, is the other, the people he talking about, though, he not talking about that?
The other two gonna be fine, because, like I said, the, the money is there for them.
The money is already there for them.
But one of them, I'm gonna have to move into a position, uh, into one empty position that I had at Sheriff's Office already. Now, what I can do is, after we find the lease, we can bring this back up next week, through the way out, and that way I'll give you names for all that.
That's it.
But I think that's all I have, and that's really wanting to, to explain some of the C Spire. Some of those questions you had earlier.
I mean, uh, uh, what is it? They just came in and recommend we put, we dropped eighteen teeth, those C Spire, right? So do we have anything, uh, in line, I know granted, so dealing with eighteen teeth that's gonna affect us, because he said for twenty dollars more, we can give a double service with C Spire, is that right?
This is at the extension office.
Oh, extension office. Uh, so yeah, I've, I've already converted those, C Spire on everybody. Now, let me ask y'all this before we leave then, says there's gonna be a meeting about these salaries, can we, can we meet with y'all on this too? Where's it gonna be meeting? Can we set a time when we can meet with y'all, just in case y'all have any questions, so y'all just don't have to look at the board about the money?
I mean, you could get with Angie.
I mean.
And.
Or is it just y'all need to look at the question?
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I, I remember when they came in, you did some demo, you moved some demo, you moved some people around. You ended up putting people back in the position, give them the title, and didn't give them the money, but you came back and asked for them to have the money, they said, well, we gonna wait till your budget season, 'cause you had brought paperwork and presented it and everything. So I think it's a matter of looking at the budget, so I don't know if you would need to meet with us or not, uh, because, um, or that, I mean, you probably let the minister look at it, and that's.
Okay. The, the motions, the salaries dropped too, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the other hot, she basically, it was a, a flip one. Some of it was, and, and like I say, she don't look at it, it really was, but, but she can look at it again, we, we actually, she'd have had it, so. She should have just washed in the cushions.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me ask a tough.
I didn't add, I didn't add any news.
Let me ask a tough question. Uh, I know the sheriff's salary is kinda like, it's a population of your county, whatever the payment be, do they have a structure of the department where?
We do.
Uh, see, I, I think, I'm just gonna speak for me, because, you know, when you come before the board and say you promoting this person, you promoting that person, you keep your file honest, and make sure every department in the county don't come up with a way to say they promoting, or they doing this, and they doing that. If, if, if we had a structure of, of your department and positions, and, but if it moved, then we probably need to be.
Well, I have that, and that's what I'm doing, I, I would move them within, but at the time, the county said they didn't have money. I didn't create any new, new positions at all, I didn't create any new promotions. It's just when I took those people out, I wasn't allowed to hate them when I put other people back in those positions. So the structure is there, you know, and the salaries are, you know, I've been met with Scott a couple of times on it was, it was, what you can pay your majors and your chiefs, and remember, truth be, I'm not gonna say that, but but yes, the structure is there, it is there, and it's just at the time, we didn't have much to do.
I, I wanna, I wanna revisit some, uh, that, that we talked about, I think you sent us a price on it, uh, the project and all the cameras, because, you know, one of the things that, uh, we are leaders of the communities, is try to make sure that we have a safe community as, uh, as we can. Now, just have a lot of, uh, growth coming, we see new businesses coming, uh, we see announcements coming, and, uh, I wanna make sure as a leader, that we can do everything we can to prevent crime or help crime, so crime rate won't deter people from coming to our city, so where were we at on the project NOLA cameras, you know, uh?
What else? Well, actually, I'm glad you asked it, because I, I did send out a list, and the only thing that we missing out that this was, was, uh, Rain's area. Now, what I was gonna ask you all in this board meeting today is, to check your schedules and see what time can we actually get them down, or do y'all wanna do a virtual meeting with Project NOLA, 'cause them may just, they'll phone call away. We've talked to citizens in all these areas, and we got several people who are willing to let us utilize their wifi if we're gonna supply cameras, especially out there in murder and morticent roads, all those areas like that, we, we got people who are who are willing to, to utilize their wifi, so it's, so y'all, y'all want to?
Well, I don't think I'm gonna have a wifi next meeting, can you do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, would you, I, I remember you sending it out, but would you, would you reject everybody so they have a current thing or, or a call?
I will, I get the one, I.
And also, as the other camera, then, if you, if you missed the rain? Did you?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, you're right, did you not have the rain included?
The rains wasn't on there, but it needs to be included, that was, that was the only one we was missing at time, was the rain. Now, I heard y'all mentioning about the pool, did y'all wanna look at, put the camera down there?
We'll be saying, it's.
These are monitored.
They have a high share of cameras, ain't nobody monitoring. Uh, we know, if something happened, you get a pop, boom, they might own it. Or then you gonna hire somebody to just sit out there and monitor.
I think, I think it's probably a good spot, like there's a safe room, and there's lockdown on there.
I agree.
All you need is somebody to monitor, maybe that can just.
I'm telling you, probably know the, they, they got the eyes forward, I'm telling you. And then, then what's happening, what I've seen happen with other camera systems is, when people realize you got such large systems, the hackers come in and hold hostage, and that's actually going on right now with certain systems, right now, I ain't gonna say where, but hackers have, need a hostage in, in certain locations, and so they can't keep utilizing, but with Project NOLA, they got their own team that fights and battles that on their own. The, the other thing that I would suggest the county, county attorney look at, and an insurance agent mentioned this to me, and I just kinda dumbfounded by it, he was saying, don't put cameras on the pool because of certain liabilities that you now become liable for. I don't, I don't recall what he said it was, but I, I'll try to find out, but maybe you need to look at that too. He, he specifically brought that to my attention, but that was about cameras on pools at houses. I can't say about it in the public, so.
So, yeah, first have to look into that, have somebody look into it.
Alright, so I'll have them.
Probably the crucial thing is to make sure not one gets hurt, and one kid's jumping in the pool and drowning. Well, Jimmy went and yanked someone out of the pool, not a guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll say this, when he said about having somebody there, I just happened to be walking in, and they were trying to stop some, some people, and make them take the showers like they supposed to, and them guys started cussing them out, so when he said I had to deal with it, I just happened to be coming over there to pick up some stuff and walked into there, so he, he is being very active when he said he really be thinking about I have somebody there. It was, it was four of them came in, and if I wouldn't have been there, that could've went way wrong, you know?
Well, let, let me tell you something, uh, we're not on this board, pretty much have a expertise in what they do. I'm gonna tell you, and this is what I believe, you know, we, we, we got some people that don't be in their right frame of mind, it's all, it's all about, how do you ask somebody to do something? If you ac- ask them to do something in the wrong way, you probably gonna get the wrong, I'm not saying that that how old that, but, uh, when we ran a swimming pool, man, all the years, we ran a swimming pool, we ain't never had no problem. I know people have changed over the years, but it's all about how you communicate with people. That's just about it, man.
Well, I, I'm gonna say just on that one incident, he, he was very cordial with those guys, he was like, hey, guys, meet you guys, you know, take a shower before you go to the pool. You guys looked at him, they kept walking, he said, hey, guys, I really need you to come back, that's, that's the rules. They looked at him again, and kept, and that's when I jumped, hooked, and did what I did, and I found out they wasn't even from that, they were from over there, you know, but I let him know how things go, there's rules and regulations, and you just not gonna walk in here with a guy trying to be nice, and ask you to do what you need to, and then you just keep on ignoring, looking at and ignoring, so. He was very cordial in that aspect, I'm just speaking on that one.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, in, in general, normally, is, is not what you say, is how you say it.
That's all I have, except for my attitude being determined.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Alright, uh, next.
Well, I got a question. Brandon, weren't you supposed to give us an update on, uh, uh?
On group two and group three?
Yes.
I'm still talking with N R C S, I never have gotten any answers back from them on, on the, uh, projects.
Okay, um, thought we were gonna have a pretty good update today on that. Okay, um, thought we were gonna have a pretty good update today on that, so we.
I did, I talked to one of the same.
Don't let me do.
The R C S and has learned and they're working on responsible, I think, um.
Alright, this, 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 that, that, I mean, um.
I'm, I mean, I had any time, I got some time up.
Okay. Robbie.
I, it's not even a pity, but it is up to them or whatever. We've been, been talking about, if he rode the bridge, what direction are we going with that old steel?
We're working on it. We're trying to get it out of, fall over the bridge, it was on top.
We, 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 we working on that right now. Yeah. Uh, we working on it.
Alright, we done come to the table, superlative.
You got a public comment?
But I'll miss come after this.
After? Okay, um, time clock, say we always get.
Yeah, not always, there's not happening, but, uh, plus the sign.
Okay. I think that's another, is that ex fiscal year?
Yes, yes.
Hey man, as a part, it's, it's, it's a time clock here, we shouldn't be waiting. We done, we done moved money around, but here are other departments, I think we need to go and get the time clocks, man.
I feel like, I've been saying for years, man.
Make your job a bit more easy.
Yeah, superlative, we go ahead and do that now, it ain't gonna be starting till the following year anyway, I mean, it's last year, so we can go ahead and do that. I do, please go ahead and do that.
Okay, my president, uh, uh, Scott. I'm gonna ask you to. Give me something where I consent to my election commissioner, commissioner to make sure that, uh, none of the people in district four was removed from the voter's room. And I need you to send it to my commissioner of district four. I need to respond because we have an election coming up and I wanna make sure everybody in district four is eligible to go to the polls.
You want a list of who's gonna merge from?
Yes, sir.
For district, will it?
The only other thing I have is, uh.
You said we got that, what were you?
I went to, uh, first Friday, uh, to listen to the city give their update. And the mayor was talking about when we went to Bakersfield, the deal with workforce, uh, initiative, I think it was a great idea, the location great, everything great. But at the end of the day, uh, they still had something different going on than I think what we have going on. They still had their city, their county, their school district, their junior college, their citizens, their newspaper. And their state representatives all at the table working on the same thing. And the only thing I'm saying is if this is the route we wanna go, which I think we need to, everybody need to be at the table on the front end. We don't need to be making decisions and taking to our state representatives and they against what we trying to do there. So I just think everybody need to be at the table, uh, when we do it. And the mayor said something that I'm glad that he said. And he said, even though workforce development is needed and it's gonna make a great impact on our community. Bottom line, he said, until we deal with the poverty issues that we have in our community, it's gonna be hard to straighten our community out. And, and I feel the same way, until we address where the problem really is, then it's gonna be hard. They go from a, a, a tale of two cities or a tale of two counties or whatever you wanna call it. Uh, we do have money to deal with some poverty issues. And I think we need to, uh, as a board, to be on board to try to deal with some of these poverty issues. And, uh, my president, um, that concludes, uh, no, 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 no.
Slipping, slipping.
I know I can't forget this, uh, my sympathy goes out to the Palm, the McFaw, and the Homestead, the McDonald, the Jones, the Mayberry, the Will, Williams. The former, the young, the Hillary, the Bowden, the Ashley, the Hurd, the Kent, and the Hayes family. Uh, and the man raised the mountain family to this and for the young man that drowned at the, uh, state park out there, uh, the mountain family. And, uh, I'm just glad we got a swimming pool in this community and we need to promote, uh, swimming to everybody that wanna learn how to swim. My president, that concludes.
Okay, hold on, that's my, uh, supervisor, let me refer to these people up here online. Uh, Mr. Terrence Bailey, do you have anything?
Yeah, yeah, uh, I, uh, I just, I wanted to, uh, Keisha Brady, she did the president of the workforce back in March. And, uh, you know, once she completely forced, um, the state allow some, some money for it. Okay, you agree, so I want to put the pool for the, uh, head of department going there, possibly get the Keisha?
Okay, we, we, hold on, did you?
Not for, not for pay increase, you can go ahead and do the pay increase.
Okay, how much is it, Keisha? How much is it?
I think it was, I think, I think number two was for twenty five, uh, twenty five hundred.
Twenty five hundred dollars. Okay, you heard the requests, you heard the request of the tax collector?
Hold on, hold on.
Got a motion by supervisor Ray, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All the favors there are, all the codes made, guys have a motion carried unanimously, anything else?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Crystal Nelson.
Um, good morning, board, I, I just wanted to come on here real quickly and request a executive inspection be held, um, due to a personnel, uh, issue.
Okay, you have an item to determine?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Alright, back to you.
Oh, just, uh, referring back to Robbins Lake, um, I'm excited about seeing that move forward. That's been something that we've dealt with literally since my first day in office.
It was two days before all of y'all came into office.
Uh, the road department, it's, it, we finalized that, it's gonna take a lot off them as well, having constantly babysit that. So it's very exciting for those residents. Um, and we're reminded before we get that kickoff tomorrow with them, Doc, concerning Merk Road. Um, the only other two things I have, Robbie, um, when you get a chance, we check Elbow Lane, I got some calls about the bitches out there. I wrote through, I don't think we do anything, if you'll check it. And then, uh, Robbins Lake, at the end of Robbins Lake, towards Berry End, where they cut the timber back there. I did get a call from Mr. Mullins, wanting to know if it gets revival, and towards over there, we'll get that checked off too. Right there, we'll follow him up.
Okay. Superlative, Nelson.
Um, the only thing I've got is, uh, out there at Kingston Community Center, uh, we're gonna try to get some bids for the acoustics to, uh, or try to fix the acoustics out there. We've already put in the five thousand dollars for that, but, uh, I had a citizen concerned about what the place looked like out there. And we spent a lot of money building that facility and it's been rented out and it's not getting clean property, it's not clean on the outside, it's not clean on the inside. People are damaging it and they're getting their deposits back anyway. And I wanted to, this individual used to help watch and maintain it, uh, Mr. McWayne. And I was wondering if we could get him to start doing that again. So, so many damages the building or does not do what they're supposed to, they don't get their deposit back. Maybe we need to up the deposit a little bit, I don't know what we can do there. But, um, when we have a building that's that nice, uh, uh, hate to see it damaged and nobody taking care of it and watching over it. Uh, you know, just slow how we can alleviate that problem.
We can get with the, um, housekeeping department, and I know that the person that used to come out here and clean transferred to the road company. So I'll just follow up.
There's no one out there?
Donovan McWayne said he would do it, he, I think county paid him a hundred dollars a month or something. And if, if somebody lives right there and he can go out there to look at it and say, okay, these people tore this up and, 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 you know, not allow them to get their deposits back or whatever. It's the only way we're gonna be able to keep the building up.
And so, is no one looking at it now?
I had a chance, he, that's why I said I'd be with, uh, Dawn.
Cause I thought Dawn would go out there and, and follow with him, and determine.
Corbett handled the deposits, didn't she?
Yeah, she goes.
But if somebody's not, telling Corbett, don't give them their deposit back, this, 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 and this are wrong, um, or. I'm sure we have the same problem at other facilities on Robins.
We build it with the hell.
Yeah, somebody got to go through. And, and you know, normal wear and tear is gonna happen, but it's something more than normal wear and tear.
We've got enough funds, I just said I have a problem.
And if not, then you can get with, ask the board to defer them.
No, that's all I had, thank y'all.
Superlative, thanks.
Oh, well, one thing I, I need to get, uh, Robin, uh, I, I thank you, sure. Came to you, you know, we have the tree cutting service. And I'm not kinda sure, uh, I, I know they said that they will be like two weeks in the front end, we're getting up limbs and debris. And I know it's been at least a month, I've got debris on the side of the road all over the district. And I actually, uh, you know, I ride my district all the time, so it's not in one place, it's everywhere they been. So I need to get on top of, of figure out from somehow to when they gonna start getting it up.
You know, me and you spoke about that, I sent an email out, I spoke with folks, parties on that. Uh, they had stopped the cutting, I might tell they're gonna stop the cutting, go to picking it up. Uh, so, Ms. Hutchins this morning, I was letting her know we do have a meeting at ten o'clock Monday morning. Uh, Wednesday morning, I'm sorry, not Tuesday, Wednesday morning on this.
Where?
Because they have cut eight thousand some cubic yards and limbs, they haven't hauled but five hundred yards off. So we're gonna have this meeting Wednesday morning at ten o'clock. And I was asking Ms. Hutchins to be in, but she, I think she'll be out, so Wes is gonna be in on the meeting. And I'm gonna get his gang in on it too, if she will do it live on or whatever, but that's the question just gonna be asked, why we cut this much? Why we had to haul, you know, money figures and things like that? So it'll be a lot to ask Wednesday, I think we get some answers as we mentioned.
Yeah.
And, 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 so it won't be the two supervisors in with Wes and I, 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 I don't like being on that meeting, if it's telephone or.
Well, we're doing it by phone, but if you come to office at ten o'clock, we'll put it on speakerphone.
Okay.
Just speaking meanwhile, and the, uh, I'll have them over there too, and then have, uh, the moderator coming and, uh, contractor.
Yeah, I, I don't like to be on that.
And Susan.
Yeah, I don't like to be on that. Uh, but you know, one thing I do wanna bring to the, uh, and, and I guess I talked to my board, and I'm talking to kinda everybody, and I, and I mean. If, when we came here in two thousand and twenty, uh, for our first year, I have seen plenty of progress. Uh, Natchez and Adams County is moving forward. One of my key things that I always, that I campaigned on is communication. And a lot of time, communication is actually being broken out, it's not because things don't happen. If you wanna find a mistake, find out who's not communicating. And I just see lately, we, we started out, uh, with new administration, everybody on one court, things start moving forward. The county and the city work real well together, but I, I'm seeing a breakdown in communication. And then to my, uh, some of the same things like, uh, supervisor Ray said about poverty. We can't address the poverty level one by one, one area to the other area, the city to the county. We have to address those things collectively. The issues that we have to make Natchez grow, just like the sheriff you brought up about, uh, crime. Crime affects everybody in Adams County, regardless if it's in your area or not, because we growing. If you get the crime rate up so much, then it, it, it lessens our chance of getting people, you know? So whatever we can do, and I, and I'll say this for individuals, myself or anybody else. If, if, if it's something that's going on, that's gonna involve more and more partners, regardless of what happens. If we agree on everything or not, I think we are grown enough and professional enough, if we, we might have different beliefs. But we need to sit down at the table and work stuff out. I mean, that's, 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 that's any department, that's from our departments in Adams County to the people that we trying to work with the friends, you know? Uh, together we stand, in divided we fall, and I was kinda short on that a bit. And, uh, but, uh, my sympathy does goes out, uh, heartfelt sympathy to all of the reeves. We lost people in there, but the Hayes family, which is an employee and Rodney Hayes' junior was an ex-employee of ours. You know, and was a good employee of ours that we acted off of a trust now, so you know, uh, people just kinda pay attention to, uh, what we have going on every day you hear somebody else tell. So let's make the best out of the opportunity that we have, uh, on day to day. Uh, COVID numbers going up, I tell people all the time, continue to protect yourself. We can't actually control other people, but you should be able to protect yourself and your family, your loved ones. And I'll use it for behind that, my president.
Thanks, supervisor Gaines, for turning us over.
Yeah, most of the things got covered during the course of the meeting, I, I would about that, uh, recreation about the pool situation, uh, you know, if we can't meet before the end of the month, I'm kinda concerned what's gonna happen with the expenses and, and so forth at that. If we can improve a budget, even this month to month or whatever, until we can get that meeting, you know? I just don't want the end of the month to run out and then all of a sudden we got a, a partner that won't chip in their share of money. Nothing against them, that's just standard business, I worry about my clients getting paid, getting the money. So I know that that was what, what they said, it was just approve a budget and they would approve a budget, whatever that is, we would, we would come, come to it, so.
So, other than your asking, I'll stick.
That's, we could, in the meantime, we have a budget that's approved, so we can at least know that there's a, something that approved, you put the ball in the court, at least to the city. They won't meet with us to at least approve some sort of budgets till we get reimbursed for something, you know, if that, if that thing runs out.
But you got the dollar amount?
Well, I mean, the budget that I don't, I mean, it's up to, up to the product of the board, but the budget that they submitted is about ninety-three thousand dollars is what they're appeased. That's what they get asked for, so.
Oh. It, and we got the reductions in there, but we thought what was unnecessary, so, so the number needs to be closer to seventy-five or eight thousand probably. I mean, could we approve something like that?
And I'm not, I'm not saying approve any certain amounts, cause that's on my honest discretion, I'm just saying something, we should, we should approve something. So that we're not, if they don't meet with us, cause it's so close to the end of the year. You know what I'm saying, I don't want us to be run, run where we don't get any reimbursement back, okay, at all.
I, I, now, I'm sure that, I, I, I'm sitting here listening to the mayor and, and, once we get the salary, then everything else gonna fall in place out there. That's, that's what I heard them say. Once we get the salary, how much we gonna pay, and they didn't know nothing about the extra person that they had working over there. Once we get those two salaries, then they can't, you know, I'm gonna pay half of everything else. I mean, what, what, what else? I mean, if they're grass cutting, they, they agree to do that, didn't you?
They'll contract.
No, they don't contract, they.
They're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna split that, they're gonna split everything. Once we get the salary and what we gonna do with the other individual, are they gonna be part-time, are they gonna be full-time, or whatever they're gonna be? To me, that's the only thing we have on the table, cause they agreed to pay half of everything else.
Except, and then, I'm not disagreeing with you, what I'm concerned about is if we can't get in writing, just wrapped up by the end of the month. Are they gonna pay any of it? And that's, and to.
Well, I'm gonna be honest with you, if we don't get, get wrapped up by the end of the month, I'm not gonna pay none of it. Cause I'm not gonna overpay nobody that I don't want other pay.
I'm not pushing you to do anything, I'm just saying set a budget and move in one of you, sit for the salary you think is good, and I'm not trying to tell you an amount of, 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 at all.
Well, I'll tell you what I think the salary should be, and everybody got their own opinion. Once we get the salary and whether the other person will be part-time or full-time, once we work that out, I don't know nothing else we need to work out. Cause they agreed to pay half of everything else, my, to, to the conversation we had with them in here.
Well, I, I think, uh, attorney's attorney's trying to get us, just go ahead and set some kind of salary, I mean, some kind of budget. So that when it comes to October one, everything will be stopped being paid. Even whether, whether we settle salary at this or that, it's still in a mouth there that we agreed on paying.
Yeah, I'm not trying to.
So, so you know, tell them what the salaries would be, just.
I understand all that, but, but I'm telling. I understand all that, but, but I'm trying to get both of y'all to see, if we get the salaries straight, everything else gonna fall in line, from what they say. That's what I'm saying. Once we figure out what the director's salary gonna be, whether the other individual gonna be part-time or full-time, everything else gonna fall into place.
And what our salary would be.
She gonna be part-time or full-time.
He's still trying to determine if that, that meeting does not occur.
So, w- w- we figure that, uh, based on our conversation with them, we, we set that one salary lower than it was. At half, for instance, and the other salary almost wiped out completely. They'll, we'll save thirty thousand dollars a year. They'll save thirty, we'll save thirty, so we can set the budget, if it was ninety-five, it would be sixty-five or seventy. And at least we have a budget. Uh, we, we, we take, because we're gonna be the contracting on the grass, and we're gonna split that, so we don't know what that price is gonna be, because we're trying to take the load off of, uh. The city's cutters and, and county's cutters.
Okay, supervisor Gaines.
Uh, you know, I, but I, I, I wanna say this too, also. Take in consideration some of the things that he said, that he need, and why it's over there, so I'm not, I'm not saying. I'm not setting anybody's salary, I'm not trying to say anything, but what he said here. A lot of volunteer, a lot of other stuff, so we gonna incur other people's expense, I think. I'm not saying what. Now, I let, what I understand here, Scott says, we need to set some kind of budget without setting salaries, so the business could be going. If that, if that, just understanding you correct. Not that we have anything to ask and say, well, who's gonna get paid what? He's just saying we need to set some kind of budget, so somehow get paid up here, we do come back to that.
Well, this is what I'm saying, supervisor Gaines. Right now, we have a sixty thousand dollar salary for a director that's not doing the whole community no more. Doing nothing but the pool and the soccer field. So if we don't correct that October the first, they're gonna get sixty thousand dollars again, and that ain't got nothing to do.
No, 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 that ain't how that works.
What how that works, Scott?
What I'm concerned about is they end up paying everything, we end up paying it, and we don't get reimbursed, which is my concern, so.
What, what, what he trying to say is, okay, if we, if the salary is a hundred and eighty-five, which comes to about ninety-two something. He asked him, yeah. No, I mean, call up the budget, what I'm saying.
I'm talking about salary, that's what.
No, 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 what I'm saying, but he's saying set a budget amount, okay? Not salary amount. We're gonna set less than what that ninety-two is, a piece. He said less, that means some of that salary will be cut in that budget amount. It has to be.
It's not gonna be cut until he says it's gonna be cut. What I'm saying is, if we don't set the salary October the first, we gonna be paying sixty thousand dollars.
No, no, they already said that we was not gonna do that. We said.
The city's saying everyone gonna do that.
Yeah, we said it's not.
Wouldn't you make an asker in the budget?
It's got, oh, oh, I'm gonna accuse you, but, you know, sorry, uh, supervisor.
Okay.
Uh, well then. Did, now, I, I mean, because maybe I, I didn't understand you right. Uh, or maybe somewhere, maybe Miss Gray, uh, with someone, I didn't understand you right, somewhere, because. What you said, uh, what, what I'm taking you said, even though you, he's not saying we owe sixty thousand dollars. To a salary which people agree not to pay. But what I'm understood him to say, we are setting some kind of budget to make sure bills are paid. Not setting anybody a salary, that don't mean, now, from what I understood, that, that don't mean somebody gonna get a sixty thousand dollar salary. But that means if there'll be in the budget to pay somebody, whatever we decide, that's correct, I ain't got it wrong for that.
What I, yeah, I'm asking that, we set something that we're comfortable with spending, right? Until we can meet again to make sure that we get the other partner's share chipped in, whatever that may be. So.
Well.
Because if it's not done, then, and these expenses aren't gonna stop.
Why won't, why won't we reach out to the city today?
We've done that.
Trying to figure out again, how to go ahead and meet and put everybody together and go ahead and get this on. Uh, you know, we got, we got a week and a half that we can, it just seem like we can't get that. I, I, I think we really need to go ahead and push for a meeting and get this out of the way.
We are pushing for meetings, definitely pushing for meetings.
So I don't see how.
We don't have a special call meeting to do this.
You can resist.
Maybe already did, and all we're gonna do is ma- make a budget up to pay. All the other things go along with food, utility bills, chemical bills, all that, that's all talking, that's all we're doing now. Approving a budget for that amount, and less the salaries that we don't know what they are, basically, that's, can we make the motion?
I'm asking, set a minimum, you know, whatever. Because we were not successful of getting meetings.
Yeah, was it?
Or best, we, we couldn't ask them for them, they have to go.
So we're gonna make a motion to take everything that has to be paid, less the salaries for that.
Yeah. So, so I understand what you're saying. So we gonna pay our bill, but we not gonna pay the individual?
The individ- individual get paid up until October one anyway. We planned that it'll have a meeting before October one.
I understand all that, I'm just saying, uh. I mean.
I just want to make a motion, less than accept the salaries until they're corrected. They pay all the, less than accept the salaries from the previous.
One, one ninety-two, I mean, one eighty-five, so you're looking at about ninety-two.
So we, we take the salaries also.
What, what are we talking about, what, what's that? Paying the bill?
That is, if you approve the budget as requested, that's half on half the expenses.
So you're not.
That's just a favor request.
You're not approving all of the ninety-two, you could approve less than the ninety-two.
That's a very important question, when this, uh, where I was going there, is this budget that we approve dealing with the whole entire. Uh, uh, county that they supposed to be taking on, uh, if this budget dealing with, they don't just dealing with the swimming pool and the soccer field, it's two different budgets. Because you can't have a budget dealing with the entire county, but they gonna be dealing with the swimming pool and, and the soccer field. And we adopt a budget like they doing the whole county, you can't do the type of money like that, man.
How, how is the budget gonna decide whether the city gonna pay their portion or not?
Because they sit there and said that they was gonna put that on everything, and once we get the salary set, they gonna put that on that, they sit there and told you. But maybe that's what I heard.
But then when we ask them for a specific figure that they'd be comfortable with, they can't be given.
Because, be- because one individual at the table, the question that we have being answered. That some of the questions that he asked today, that was some of the questions was my concern, and some of other people's concern. Well, why do you have these people here, what do they do, what do they do? Nobody can answer those questions the other day at the table, that's why I was brought back to the table, because you had other people concern about. Other people's salaries or job descriptions, we did not have a job description to go by, we did not have that. And we did not have a square president, and so that was some of the other common concern, to say, hey. Why do we have these people, what are they here for? Now, tell us what we doing this for, what are they supposed to do, that's what I understood. And that's why we said we was gonna put everybody together and do it, so somehow it got out of there, we had adopted a budget which we had. So it's very important, to put all of our parties at the table, so we can make a decision, a right decision. Let everybody vote how they wanna vote, but at least have true information. So arguing back and forth, I feel like that's giving everybody a fat chance to, to put all of our parties at the table. Put the information, the true facts on the line, what they job description are, why they here, what they did, and let the city and the county vote on. What they gonna do and move forward.
I agree totally with what you're saying. I'm saying temporarily, if, if, if we can't meet before the end of the month, you know, to avoid something, we should. Get some sort of amount to carry us through between happy. That's all.
I, I, I'm, 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 I'm still what you said.
I want to make sure we can have.
And I just, I won't have, I won't, I won't have anything to, and I thought I was still what you said. But I think it's.
Okay, best thing for us to do is stop today, see if you just, I mean, set with the city. Probably Wednesday, if possible. Is Wednesday a good enough day for everybody? Is anything happening Wednesday? I, I heard something's supposed to happen Wednesday, I'm supposed to meet, ten o'clock.
Well, that's more important, I skip that meeting, don't worry about setting meeting up.
Look, let, let's set, well, you said.
I said you said enough, well, I skipped that meeting.
Sorry, you said meeting just as important.
Yeah, that's important too, that's, try to set up our alcohol, you have to do it at the launch. Okay.
I've given already your question, I'll continue your request.
Yes, okay.
It is not.
Getting aware of doing this here. Okay, go ahead, you have anything else? Okay. Chancellor Clark, Miranda Lewis.
From, we approved the, um, the agreement with Alliance Ruleable to Move Forward with it for the Board of Representatives meeting. We did not have the additional contract, and she can have the spread policy.
You heard the request of the Chancellor Clark in a motion.
Oh, exactly.
By supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Wilson, and a discussion.
Yeah, that, since that's a room, maybe there's a actual, there's a meeting. Actual, right.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. I have to have a motion carried, denounce, please.
I'll need to have the August tax revision settlement spread policy, please.
You heard the request of the Chancellor Clark, got a motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Wilson, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. I have to have a motion carried, denounce, please.
We were approached by the, this be part of our house of history, you know, our county collects a one dollar fee. Um, they presented to us, they have some funds for grants. And they've submitted to us and said if our county would like to apply for the grant, it's a ten thousand dollar grant with a two thousand dollar match. And I do have funds that go over my budget. Um, this would just be authorizing President to sign all the resolution, authorizing, um, Allen here to be forth with the grant operation.
Okay, you heard the request of the Chancellor Clark, in a motion, motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Wilson, and a discussion.
And this, if this is granted, all of your indexes would get, what we, would be computerized, digitized at the, at the record.
For every record, yeah.
That goes to the county, but.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. I have to have a motion carried, denounce, please. Anything else?
I did reach out to Derek Cooper, who's our contact at Secretary of State concerning the auction on the properties that have been set up to the state. He said they are a little bit behind because of COVID, but they are going to be moving forward with that again in twenty twenty-two. Then we'll reach out to Adams County just to, um, ensure that we're still in feeling what we will be, and we'll give some reclamation come next.
That's all you have?
Um, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I do have one more thing.
Okay.
Uh, we had a request for an intelligent burial, um, this is where the county, uh, they kind of submit documentation saying we do not have enough. Funds to cover burial of the individuals, um, that can pass the application around, or don't quite see it.
So, at least.
You have it in it?
You come here, we all have it. Where are you going to see it? Yeah, we got about half of those around here.
Just one law. Can I get a motion?
Ooh.
Got a motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Gaines, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. I have to have it all carried, denounce, please. That's all you have, I think, okay? Deputy clerk, Paige King. You don't have anything, county administrator, anything?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything. Okay, I have here. I have a request from, uh, the judge, Justice for Judges, that's to attend a mandated conference. And belongs to October the fifth through the eighth. And I need a motion.
Ooh.
Got a motion by supervisor Gaines.
Sir.
Second by supervisor Wilson, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. I have to have a motion carried, denounce, please. I have something, uh, a rent, a agreement.
Paid reverse in fact.
Paid, yeah.
Anar CS.
Yeah, anar CS. And the amount, a man at a thousand seven hundred and six twenty-five. Can I get a motion?
Ooh.
Got a motion by supervisor Gaines.
Sir.
Second by supervisor Wilson, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. I have to have a motion carried, denounce, please. I also have a new priority for telecommunication one. Um, annual salary ten dollars, I mean, no, not annual, hourly salary ten dollars, annual twenty thousand eight hundred. And his name is Deanna Dickerson. We're gonna change that to twelve, but that was so, I told you never, she's gonna start. So this is, this starts October, right? This is, it starts October, yeah.
We tend to.
So, yeah, so, okay. You heard the request?
Ooh.
Got a motion by supervisor Gaines. Second by supervisor Wilson, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. I have to have a motion carried, denounce, please.
Easy one, at the next meeting, you need to list everybody's new salaries, so we can throw that on, and, and that will serve and then have a reward. But I. I thought that.
I have some grants reimbursed, it's on the top there. Uh, and the amount, one of them is twenty thousand nine hundred and seventy-two, seventy. And this is a request for payment. So this will be reimbursed. Do not have another one in the mouth of.
Both, both.
Yeah, no, both of them, they're different, yeah, both of them, they're different amounts. The other mouth is twenty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine, thirty. Okay, I have a motion.
Ooh.
Got a motion by supervisor Gaines.
Sir.
Second by supervisor Gray, in a discussion. This is a higher rent.
And you used higher rent?
So we, we pick up some tires?
Do a tire haul to the town, or, I mean, we got this following.
Tire rent, we get reimbursed.
Because we have.
Tire shop, anything, like we buy each property, whatever, one or two tires, and we rather we accept those, we don't accept them.
So what about the tire, though, kind of, for?
What do you mean?
You remember when you drive down, put the tub, that guy went in there and then got all the tires and put them up there, so let me, he can take them anywhere else?
Where'd he get them from, out of the dump site?
Out of his buyer, right? Behind his house.
Yeah, I said, I wrote a form, two or three, is what you want me to take from a resident, is what we get, that's how we get all, we take them to Kingston there, to bring them from Kingston to follow them out, that's where you gonna pick them up at.
Okay, well, I'm asking a question.
Okay.
If a resident got a piece of property, because you know back in the day, they say tires was supposed to be stabilized, your property.
And then they don't know what, he lined up fifty, what does he do?
He got them on the road, it don't look good.
That's what I'm saying.
So what do we do?
I require a per se, I'm the same. He's done picked them up, he done got them, he done picked them up, just got them, got them, got them stacked up on his prop. And then you know what to do, well, my guess is put your.
Yeah, he, uh, he gonna come get them.
Put that bad plus, cause, call N D Q, my bill is something.
Yeah.
So then you spend all, what, what, can you bring? Or we had something else, though.
Oh, we got, we got, we got, we got, you know, for everybody picked up, and we just get reimbursed, there is a certain amount.
Yeah, well, that's what we did, check, we did, we did, we take a few more, yeah, you know, we had more for all of it.
Oh, yeah, this is a very special.
Supervisor, like it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. I have to have a motion carried, denounce, please. Okay, I got a deal from Ms. Joyce Johnson, and it says, please be advised that it is not intended to resign my position on the Board of Trustees for, for, for calling in for Paul Lincoln Community College, Wilson, Matthews, and Simpson immediately. So we need to accept this resignation.
Ooh.
Got a motion by Superbiseñor Gray, second by Superbiseñor Ganes, and a discussion. Um, the members say aye. All opposed, nay. The House had a motion carried unanimously. And we'll go next week, we need to look for replacement. For Paul Wood.
For Paul Wood.
Don't they go by dishes?
Huh?
Don't everybody have a?
Yes, that is, yeah, 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 she'll go replace him. Okay, this is a letter that has come from Phil Gar, it's, yes, Peter. Uh, it says, I'm reading to you. Um, in the two thousand twenty-one legislative session, you are Mississippi a legislator with the leadership of Representative Angela Poplinham, Robert Johnson the third, and Sam Mills. Appropriate one million to fund upway to the Baywood living. The House of Representatives is proud to part and review to, to, to make Adams County a better place. That we can call home. Just, just letting us know about the one billion dollars on Baywood, which we already have. Okay, that's all I have here, and, uh, what's that? Jeff?
Do we have a separate account that we need?
No, no, that's not, that's, that's like.
No, thank you, just a.
You do care, let's consider banking account, you go to do that, um.
Do we need it?
Yeah, they said you have to have separate bank account, that's why I asked.
Do we, do we not have another account with your names?
Just like separate, no, because every of ours made a money.
We'll check to whether it's an account or fund.
So we can go through the same account we did.
We will check to be sure. They often say that you gotta have your own separate banking account, but we really need you to have your own fund. We'll confirm that with state office.
So my question is, this is not the first time we received a million dollars, right?
But I think it's from.
This is the first time, this is the first day of state.
So we need money from, from the Baywood living?
U S B.
D R A.
D R A.
So this is the first time.
This is from the state account. So we're gonna call the state office and make sure that we need our own separate account. Doesn't know why, but anyway.
All right. Okay, I need a motion to determine, since they have a session.
Ooh.
Got a motion by Superbiseñor Gray, second by Superbiseñor Ganes, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The House had a motion carried unanimously. All right, let me do a process, I'm gonna go back into the regulation, then. I need a motion to go back into the regulation.
Ooh.
Got a motion by Superbiseñor Ganes.
Sir.
Second by Superbiseñor Wilson. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The House had a motion carried unanimously. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? Now I need a motion to go back into the commission.
Ooh.
Got a motion by Superbiseñor Gray, second by Superbiseñor Ganes, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The House had a motion carried unanimously.